All right, we'll come back to order. Please call the roll.
Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Item 38 is the initiation of the Upper West Side master planning process.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am not Leanne Moffett. I am Todd Smith with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. Leanne is home sick today, so I'll be filling in. I do have about 10 or 11 slides to go through real briefly. And just so you're aware, the applicant does have a short presentation as well. So this project is the Upper West Side specific plan. The purpose of today's hearing is solely initiation of the master planning process. For those who are not aware, we do have board-adopted master plan guidelines that guide the master plan or specific plan process from initiation all the way through adoption hearings or whatever the action may be. This is the first step in a very lengthy process that could take many years. And there are two or one or two checks along the way that I'm going to go through in the presentation. So first, a summary of what today's request is. This is, again, initiating the Upper West Side specific plan. We would also want the board to recognize that the proposed outreach program is adequate with an expectation that's outlined in the staff report, that it become more enhanced to reach a greater diversity of stakeholders and to ensure transparency of the process along the way. The third request here is a determination that the boundary of the proposed specific plan is adequate to begin the process. We recognized and we outlined some issues with the boundary in the staff report. I'm not going to go over them in great detail, but we want to acknowledge that for the purposes of initiating, the boundary is appropriate and acknowledge the understanding that that boundary may change along the way as further technical details come into light. The fourth request is a direction to the planning director to convene what's called the Technical Advisory Committee. Our master plan guidelines call for this committee to be formed. It is essentially a group of technical experts on various topics from service providers to different agencies that have input into the process. And finally, we want to authorize the planning director to sign the funding agreement for the project. This is the agreement that specifies approximate budget for the project that covers all of county staff's time for a number of years. So the project is located in the unincorporated portion of Natomas, roughly north of Interstate 80 between the city of Sacramento on the east side and the Sacramento River on the west side. The proposed project is a little over 2,000 acres, and it's, again, within the Natomas basin and what's known as the Natomas Joint Vision Area. That's an area that's an overlay on the general plan where, in the adoption of the 2011 general plan, we called out this area for potential study. Some who've been around a long time may know of this area as the Boot Precinct. That's what it was called through that process, and this name change is proposed by the applicant.
Todd?
Yes.
Before you leave that slide, and I'm going to interrupt as you go along, I'm going to take that liberty if I find that there's something that I think requires clarity, especially for those of my constituents that are in the audience.
Yes.
I want to make clear that the red hash marks that are up there are not co-terminous with what the proposed footprint for urban development is necessarily.
That is correct.
Okay, so maybe elaborate just a little bit with that, the distinction between the two. It's very important.
Sure. If you don't mind, can I do that at a later slide that shows the land use plan?
Okay.
That helps explain a little bit better.
I just want folks, when they're looking at this slide, because we're at this slide, to understand that does not represent the footprint of urbanization.
That is correct. I'll explain that at a subsequent slide.
Thank you.
Could you move the podium up higher so we can hear you better, please? If it will go up any higher. There we go.
How's that? Better?
Stand closer.
He's suffering a cold, too.
Better?
Yeah.
All right.
Lots of colds up here.
So this slide is, again, a little bit of history. On the left side, what you see is what was proposed in the Natomas Vision Plan roughly in 2015. In the southern portion of the slide, or excuse me, the basin, you can see what's called that as the Boot Area. Just for context, that was what was proposed in 2015. And on the right side, you see roughly the boundary of the Upper West Side project for And this slide is where I want to explain the detail, Supervisor Serna, that you pointed out. So the aerial on the left side is the yellow project area outlined. On the right side, we have the proposed land use plan. And that area along the Garden Highway is shown as the lighter green and the tan. That area is identified as ag and open space, and some urban farm and green belt interspersed. So the proposed project does include expansion of the urban policy area and urban services boundary, although not full urbanization of the entire footprint.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a question, Mr. Chair? On that way up in, I think, to Mr. Serna's point. So if you had to take an estimate at what's being proposed in that conceptual land use plan on the right-hand side of the slide?
Yes.
Todd, what percentage of, and again, this is what's being submitted by the applicant as for consideration as the, assuming this is initiated, what would you estimate the part that'd be subject to urbanization, including schools and such? Some of that's already included, I believe it could actually occur. Of the 2,000 acres, what's being proposed for?
In terms of acreage number?
Yeah, or percentage, you say 2,000 acres.
Yeah, I would say roughly 75-ish percent. That's my ballpark guess.
So 1,500 acres of 2,000 roughly is?
Roughly. And we can dig into the detail if necessary.
Okay, all right.
But to that point, just in the interest of accuracy, I'd say it's probably actually greater because you'd have to extract from that the fact that the Natomas Unified School District is on its separate track in terms of their own school site. So if you assume the school site is proceeding independent of this proposal, the footprint shrinks. So the denominator's a different denominator.
That could be, yes.
Thank you.
So the next couple of slides really highlight some key issues that are explained in more detail in the staff report. All of these are pretty substantial in nature, and I don't want to get into too much detail here, but a few of these things, like city-county coordination. The city and county did have a memorandum of understanding for the Natomas Vision Plan that was signed in 2002. There's never been any formal amendment to that MOU, but there was an agreement among the leadership of the city and the county at the time, roughly 2008, where the county would take on the development role, which is in contrast to what the MOU says. The second item here, the existing Natomas Habitat Conservation Plan and Metro Air Park Habitat Conservation Plan are in place in the Natomas Basin. There's an assumption in those plans that the remaining agricultural land in unincorporated Sacramento County would remain in agriculture. Sacramento County is not signatory to either of those plans, but there is an assumption in them that that land remain in ag. Obviously, for the success of the project, it would be incumbent on either the applicant or the county to develop some sort of mitigation strategy that shows that the project is not adversely affecting either of those plans. That will be a significant challenge.
Can I stop you there again?
Sure.
Is there a point in addressing that particular angle to this?
Mm-hmm.
Where it constitutes kind of go-no-go for this?
So there is, in the judge's opinion on the Natomas HCP, it says essentially that approval of further development beyond what was assumed in the HCP would potentially lead the resource agencies, that is, the federal U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the State Department of Fish and Wildlife, to revisit the viability of the incidental take permits issued under those HCPs. So it becomes very difficult, I mean, this is projecting years down the road.
Sure.
I don't, we as staff don't see a path where we could bring a project of this magnitude with this complexity of issues with respect to the HCP forward for consideration for approval without that issue being resolved.
Okay, and understanding that that's an extremely high hurdle.
Correct.
That's a significant challenge.
It is.
Just playing devil's advocate here, there could be prospective plaintiff, for instance, that hitches their wagon to the MOU, hitches their wagon to the fact that there's already been members of the local judiciary that have concluded that the basin is finite in terms of kind of the universe of habitat area that can be considered, given all the other competing interests that require that habitat, namely the growth of Natomas to date in the city of Sacramento, Metro Air Park, the Sacramento International Airport, correct? Okay.
To expand on that a little bit, there is an option in the existing HCP for what's called Area B. It's, not to get into too much of the weeds, but it's an area outside of the, immediately outside to the north of the basin that's under consideration.
But there are a number of triggers or criteria that would have to be met to even?
Correct.
Consider that.
Correct. So obviously, these two, first two points will take a significant amount of coordination with not just the city, but Sutter County, who's signatory to the Natomas HCP.
And the federal government.
And the federal government, yes. The second, or the third, fourth, and fifth points here are more local in nature. Of course, in this area of the basin, we're talking about prime farmland, a lot of investments in the agricultural viability of that area. And on a separate track, we are having a conversation about the county's general plan policy when it comes to ag mitigation. Water supply, there is currently no municipal industrial water purveyor in this area. Airport protection, obviously with Sacramento International Airport to the northwest, there's a tremendous amount of county investment, as well as federal investment in that airport. It's our responsibility as staff to make sure that that investment is protected. Climate change, adaptation, resiliency, these are really important issues in the world today, especially in an area where there's an existing floodplain that's surrounded by a levy, a large levy project that's in the works to be upgraded to current standards. We have to ensure, consistent with the county's general plan, that any action on the project that may be coming in the future meets the resiliency standards that are promulgated by the state and incorporated in the county's general plan. And that, the same goes for the drainage and flooding concerns. Back to the project boundary, a little bit more detail here. To the northwest corner of the project, there are some ongoing acquisitions by Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency. These came to light as we were doing some initial outreach when the application first came in. That process is not yet completed, but SAFCA is engaged in negotiations with landowners there for the southern portion of the Natomas Levy Improvement Project. They are also acquiring land or exchanging land with the Natomas Basin Conservancy as a result of that, and that has the potential to affect the proposed land use plan. The general plan consistency issues, I want to start with just the initiation step, which is today's conversation. Our policy, LU 119, provides for essentially four components to be verified prior to initiation. And then any consideration for approval would be subject to LU 120, LU 127, LU 15, plus the whole host of other general plan policies related to conservation and ag that you may hear about. And I already mentioned the Technical Advisory Committee. We're hoping to convene that fairly soon, assuming, of course, that initiation occurs today. We hope to get a significant amount of technical information to inform the land use planning process as well as the boundary.
Supervisor Serna?
Just want to point out and add to the comment and the bullet points there as it relates to the general plan. The county is currently exploring and revising an additional new element to our general plan.
The environmental justice element?
The environmental justice element. And so by the time this, if it were to move forward, by the time it would be back before this board or Planning Commission for any subsequent approvals and determinations, especially of consistency with the general plan, it would be subject not only to the general plan today, but to the general plan of tomorrow, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is the four points of LU 119. Essentially, the project must include a parallel process to expand the urban policy area as well as preparation of a master plan. The project is proposing to do that. The project must include a justification statement and an outreach plan. We have those, and they're in your materials. Here, I want to reiterate our point about enhancing the outreach plan to include a diversity, greater diversity of stakeholders and to make sure that the process is transparent to everyone. The third point, proximity to existing urban areas. Staff believes this can be met by the adjacency to the city of Sacramento to the north and east side and the south side. And then finally, the logical, comprehensive, cohesive planning boundaries. Again, we believe this criteria can be met with the qualification here that we do want to return to the board as further technical details emerge to better define what that boundary is on the western edge, I'll call it. So finally, our recommendation is to initiate the specific plan process. It's clear, as we went through the general plan policies related to new growth areas, that this is the logical step. It's clearly not a guarantee of any future outcome. It is a, from staff's perspective, a very risky proposition, given the high hurdles that are included, not just in general plan policy, but all the technical details that need to be addressed as the project goes through the process.
Supervisor Serna?
I'll let Todd complete his thought here. This is the last slide of staff's presentation.
That was it? This is just a repeat of the recommendations, so you've heard that before.
So it's a nice segue into this concept of risk-taking. Todd, maybe you can kind of, again, mostly for the benefit of?
Sure.
Those in the audience, can you briefly cite or speak to the fact that there's a history in this county of very, very expensive efforts, very time-consuming efforts, not just that relates to Natomas?
Right.
But other parts of the county?
I can do that.
To start, to initiate these processes, to change the land use, to commit yourself to the environmental studies?
Right.
To hire army of consultants and attorneys?
Yes.
Again, very expensive, sometimes measured not in months, but more likely years.
Yes.
And they fall flat. They come to an abrupt end for one reason or another. There's litigation, there's neighborhood opposition, there is determination of inconsistency with key comprehensive planning documents that the county has on the books. I mean, there's a whole different array of pitfalls here that can undermine these types of efforts. So can you speak to that, again, not just in the context of Natomas, but the entire county?
Yes. So in the context, I'll start with this project. Our funding agreement, which is in your materials, has an estimated budget of over $2 million. That is roughly three to four years' worth of work. And that is not based on any assumption of meeting certain milestones at a certain point. It's just staff time to participate in the process for this number of years. But we have other examples in other parts of the county. I'll go to Jackson Highway. So we've got four master plans in the process there. The first one was initiated early 2012, so shortly after the general plan was adopted that allowed for this process to, for master plans to come in the way they are. That project has not come to hearing before your board yet. We published a draft EIR in July of last year. So from 2012 to 2018, we've been working through all the technical issues on one of those projects. The other ones, I'll go to Mather South, for example. That project started in 2013. There was significant opposition to what was proposed at that time in terms of the land use plan. The applicant had to go back at their expense, including staff's expense, too, to revise the project multiple years into the process, to revise it, redo their technical studies. We have not brought that project forward to hearing yet. Those are two examples. Multiple millions of dollars, and the same is true of the others along Jackson Corridor. Some of that have been added since 2008. And it's, I mean, in that case, one of them, it's been over a decade.
Okay, and so one of the things that hasn't been mentioned, either in the slide presentation or by me, is in addition to all those, you know, dedicated cost centers that are associated with an initiative like this?
Mm-hmm.
There is also the carry cost. So in other words, the cost of optioning acreage. So you have acreage that remains as-is for years or decades. Meanwhile, you're paying option payments. It's really a bet on the come that you're going to acquire at some point the approval is necessary to change the land use, and if the land use, if that doesn't materialize for whatever reason, that's a sunk cost. That's money out the door.
Right, and what I didn't respond to your question with was, I would just mention in county costs, there are significant consultant costs involved in this. For example, all the technical infrastructure studies, sewer, water, drainage, flood control, traffic, air quality, greenhouse gases, noise, airport compatibility, biological resources, to name a few. Those are not inexpensive efforts.
And just one last comment on the subject of expense. I just want to be clear that the project proponent understands that the recommendation by staff is that this can and should move forward, knowing what we know today, as the first of many, 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 many steps that would have to take place, and there would have to be a determination that, you know, in those future steps to continue to move forward. But by no means does any of this come at some net county cost. In other words?
That's correct.
The project proponent is paying for any and all staff time. This actually, there's not one red cent that comes at the expense of the taxpayer, other than the property owners involved with this initiative, that own property out there. And again, it's at the complete total risk of that, those project proponents, not the taxpayer, not our general fund, correct?
That is correct. The construct of the general plan, when it comes to these types of projects, the large master plans for new growth areas, we have a requirement in the general plan that it be at no expense or negative financial impact to existing ratepayers or taxpayers, for that matter. Furthermore, the, I'm going to point out this sentence in the board letter. Initiation will provide for the technical study on some of these issues and provide for the process to determine feasibility. It's not by any stretch a guarantee of any certain outcome.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So that's the end of my presentation. If there are any further questions at this point, I'd be happy to answer them, but I want to remind folks that the applicant did have a short presentation as well.
Supervisor Natoli?
Question for you, Todd, because I think there's one important distinction, if I'm correct, to this versus, say, the Jackson Highway. Those require, obviously, specific plans and urban policy area expansions, but does this not also require the movement of the urban services boundary?
It does. Both the urban services boundary and the urban policy area boundary are proposed to be amended with the project. So it's a higher bar for the urban services boundary.
Basically, the highest bar, because that requires, you know, certain extraordinary findings by the board or?
Correct.
And/or four-fifths vote.
Right.
And that stood up for some 25 years. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to, yeah.
I was just going to say, you're exactly right. LU 127 has six criteria that a project must meet in order to expand the urban services boundary. If it cannot meet any one of those six criteria, the project requires a four-fifths vote of the board.
Okay, that's an important distinction. Thanks, Todd. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe we'll hear from the project proponent.
Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Nick Avedis with the Thomas Law Group on behalf of Bob Thomas, no relation, and the participating landowners for the Upper West Side project. If I can get our PowerPoint up, please, that'd be great. As we get started here at the outset, and I'll repeat it several times, we fully appreciate and are under no illusion as to the scope and magnitude of this effort and the risks involved with going down this pass and path in determining feasibility of pursuing a project here. Before I dive into this, I certainly want to make a few introductions to the folks that are with me today. We have our project team, as well as representatives of the landowner groups, namely the Perry family, Cornelius family, Bastio and Renoso families. These are families with long ties and deep, rich history in the Natomas Basin. Also with me is Bob Thomas, our project manager, Adam Gudero, Stacy McKinley from the McKinley Group, Jose Hermosillo from Hermosillo Azovito Strategic Communications, as well as Tim Denham from Wood Rogers, our principal planner on this project, whom you'll hear from in a moment. I also saw representatives of the Ramos family, as well as Bobby Gasol and other landowners and their representatives, who have been very supportive of our efforts to date. I think in terms of the background that was provided in the staff report, I won't go into that. Obviously, there's a long and extensive history of the Natomas Joint Vision efforts, of which the Boot, now the Upper West Side, is a part of. This slide really here provides some perspective in terms of our location with regards to other project areas in this part of the region. You know, our project is ideally situated within three and a half, at our closest point to five miles from downtown, measured to the Capitol Building. You know, really, the Upper West Side project is intended, and you'll hear some of the details from Mr. Denham here in a moment, but it really is intended to be an aspirational project that really has an eye to the future and is reflective of what we want to be as a region when it comes to master plan development. And namely, what that means is a plan that's more dense and currently being in the midst of a mobility revolution in our country, a focus on reduction on VMT and GHG emissions from new development through innovative planning and intelligent design that's intended to provide housing opportunities for all income levels in a diverse, dense, amenity-rich community that's a stone's throw from downtown and hundreds of thousands of existing jobs. Our plan thinks big and plans boldly. While we are extremely early in the process, our team has brought big ideas to the table, and we've aimed big with this conceptual plan. With the help of Tim Denham and the talented folks at Wood Rogers, I think we feel not only are we on a trajectory to meet the county's thresholds for evaluating a possible development in Natomas, but far exceed them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over quickly to Tim Denham to talk a little bit about the project details, and I'll come back and make some closing remarks.
Okay, Mr. Avedis.
Yes.
Supervisor Serna?
If you can go back to the previous slide, please. Can you just kind of go around the horn there and just note which of these project areas are adjacent or, in fact, fit like puzzle pieces to incorporated areas, cities?
So really, I think the only property that fits like a puzzle piece, as you say, Supervisor Serna, certainly the Panhandle and certainly our project. Most of the plan areas that you see here are predominantly surrounded by unincorporated development until, obviously, you get into the South Placer area with Rest Roseville.
So some would be just sitting by the? So some would be just sitting by themselves in the unincorporated area, not even adjacent on one edge to a city in different counties, right?
Certainly. I mean, the Sutter Point project, that's been approved for many, many years, and you'll see this in our, further in our presentation. And one of, one of the unique advantages that this project presents is really taking advantage of existing infrastructure as opposed to a project like Sutter Point, which has been approved for many, many years. It's not near any existing infrastructure to realize any sort of development in the immediate term.
Thank you.
Mr. Denham.
Chair Kennedy and fellow board members, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today about our project advances. The next slide. There we go. This is the last major master plan area within five miles of downtown Sacramento. It measures 2,000 acres, a little bit over. We feel we meet all four of the criteria for project initiation under LU 119. It's infill. We've picked a comprehensive boundary to allow full discussion. We've provided our justification statement. We started our outreach program, and yes, we will be processing a UPA and a USP concurrently. We're surrounded to the north, east, east, and southeast by the city of Sacramento, approximately 64% of our plan area boundary. We extended west to Garden Highway, but we did not go west of Garden Highway because that area west of Garden Highway is mostly developed with homes that sit on half acre to one acre home sites adjacent to the Sacramento River. We started with a conceptual bubble plan to kind of clarify some earlier comments. There's 531 acres on the west side of this plan as preserved as an open space ag rez buffer, consistent with the previous Natomas vision plans. We've extended this, the West El Camino roadway as an urban node within this project. We've talked with the school district to the north about an educational node. There's a two-mile green belt that extends interior to the project, north and south, as well as east-west. It's the dark green area that you see. And then there's a one-mile west side canals, we're calling it. A little hard to see on this map, but that cuts diagonally, or excuse me, perpendicularly across the, the main street. And so from there, we progressed to a preliminary land use plan. We know this will evolve over time as we get input in this process from all the stakeholders. But we start with a plan that exceeds the design criteria one, density of 10 units an acre. We thought we would start there. We wanted to aim high. It will include a very diverse mix of housing within this project. We had eight concepts in mind when we formulated the plan. We want to keep those in mind as we move forward. This is an opportunity to create something very special as a project that, quite honestly, as a planner, you don't get to work on projects like this every day when you're, in your career. So this is kind of an exciting one for me to work on. We will include an urban town center. We're gonna embrace density. This will help us meet design criteria three, which with vertically integrated development with three and four and five-story residential or office above commercial. It'll be a different kind of town center than you maybe seen in some, some other projects. And we use Santana Row in San Jose as a good model, as a good vision or example of that.
So, Tim, real quick, just to kind of get a mental image of this and its intensity and, and density, is this, would this be a, a more intense and dense archetype compared to, for instance, the El Dorado Hills Town Center?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
So El Dorado Hills Town Center is about two-story. You know, this would be twice that.
Okay. Thank you.
We included in the project the west side canal. This is something that would be a unique opportunity for urban, you know, architecturally fronted waterfront, would have trails on either side. Again, we looked at examples in other communities. The top photo is the San Antonio River Walk. The bottom photo, which we think we're closer to in what we're trying to model after, is the Bricktown Canal in Oklahoma City. It'd be a great recreational opportunity. It would allow paddleboarders and kayaking, electric boats, a lot of interface with that, that canal. We've talked with the Natomas Unified School District and Los Rios Community College District. They own some significant properties on the north end of the plan. And Los Rios has expressed an interest in a vocational campus on that north end of the plan as an anchor for this community and providing a, a hands-on vocational training center for students that, when you think about where we're going in the next 10 or 20 years with driverless technology and robotics and drones, we're perhaps missing that as an aspect of our curriculum, and we need to offer that, that type of education to our students. We have a green belt and urban farm within the, is this cutting out or no? Okay. We have a green belt and urban farm interior to the project. The thinking there is to provide opportunities for residents, particularly in the high-density area, to grow their own food. It could be either individual garden plots. It could be organized through a larger co-op. But it's a different kind of recreational opportunity that we think the future residents will use and enjoy. The jobs housing balance, the site's just very well located. It's already within over 200,000 jobs within five miles, which exceeds the design criteria five of the county's plan by a factor of two. So this type of compact development pattern will help meet the, the goals of the region for reducing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions from new development.
How, can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
What, how are we to interpret Metro Air Park there?
How are you?
Well, it's, it doesn't seem to match a color on the legend, but we know that that's gonna have 38,000 jobs that build out.
This is data from Secog, that's about a year old. It didn't quite have the Amazon facility there, but there are some jobs there as well.
Well, yeah, and I'm just noting the fact that it's expected to have close to 40,000 that build, not just the Amazon, but
Right.
40,000 once it is built up.
So this is a project, you know, that would support, you know, what's happening in Metro Air Park and with the Centene campus close by. Transportation, mobility, travel modes are changing, maybe not as rapidly as some of us would hope, but we're seeing autonomous vehicles and shared ownership of cars, which will reduce the amount of car ownership, but I think reduce parking, which in turn will allow projects to be a little denser as we go forward in the next 10 or 20 years. Like microtransit apps like Uber and Lyft and jump bikes are just gonna become more pervasive as we go forward. We want to have standards that encourage hybrid electric vehicles, that's continuing to gain market share. And lastly, we want to have convenient transit to encourage people to use those facilities. Sustainability, it's really, you know, asking the question, how do we reduce our footprint kind of across all aspects of a, a master plan community? So yes, we're gonna have to mitigate our impacts, but we also have to look at stormwater runoff and capturing that and pre-treating it. The idea of the urban farming and local food choices and reducing miles traveled to deliver that. We're gonna pursue a goal of a net zero electric community or a partial net zero electric community. That hasn't been done before with a 1,500-acre project, but it's, it's a goal. And again, we're gonna support hybrid electric vehicles. Lastly, adjacent infrastructure. It's really a smart, you know, one of the key aspects of smart growth. We are very close to a lot of extensive investment in freeway improvements, the airport improvements, the downtown, the levy, what's happened with Centene. So being close to those types of improvements helps this project, I think, advance, but if, if it does advance. And we're gonna support and contribute to those improvements. And I just took a couple examples from the application book that was provided, but you know, it's really, design criteria two gets at a proximity analysis. If we can put things closer, you're gonna encourage people to walk or bike versus driving. And so we extrapolate a little bit from that and looked at the, the county's goal or upper target of 85% of the units should be within one mile of a park. This plan, at least as drawn now, has 97% of the units within a quarter mile. So that's how you get people to walk and ride their bike. We looked at the design criteria four for transit and kind of what's happened with Sacramento State with their new Ollie bus and they're, they're shelling folks around the autonomous vehicle there. This could happen within this plan area when it, when it goes forward. And a simple loop system could provide access to the future residents, but we took that measure from a half mile to a quarter mile. And again, 84% of the proposed units are within a quarter mile of a transit stop. And I'll, I'll turn over to Nick Abdis if, unless there's any questions.
All right. Just want to make some comments here, obviously to wrap up. You know, again, just to reiterate some of the points that have been made, this is the first step today of a thousand-mile journey, a, a process that will in fact be measured in years and definitely not months, and one is that, one that will require significant data collection, valuation, analysis, robust outreach and community input. The landowner group is well aware of this and endeavor nevertheless. In terms of some brief points on community outreach, we have engaged and will continue to engage the community and other stakeholders as we proceed through this process. To date, we've communicated in writing to 100% of the plan area owners, and we've met and talked with virtually all of the largest property owners. And we're pleased to say that to date, we've received letters of support from about 70% of the land area that comprises our project. We've to date, again, reached out to more than two dozen stakeholder groups to obtain preliminary feedback on our initial planning concept, but certainly there is much, much more to come. But overall, early stakeholder feedback has generally been positive, especially with regards to the innovative design, density near the town center and other community amenities. We understand that we need to focus on habitat and species issues as well as traffic-related challenges, especially on West El Camino and I-80, to just mention a few issues. We'll continue to work closely with county staff and dedicate significant resources to an extensive and robust public engagement effort. I do want to make some specific comments on the conservation strategy. You know, we are, again, under no illusion, this is the biggest issue that we face for any development out in the Natomas Basin, given the complexities of habitat and species issues. It goes without saying that, you know, our guiding principle is to neither impede or negatively impact the existing HCPs in the basin, their goals and objectives. Our intent is to build on the successes of the Natomas Basin Conservancy and others to mitigate for impacts to species and habitat. Again, again, our commitment to stakeholder engagement is deep. We intend to engage the environmental community early with the hope of collaborative approaches to least impact species with, and when those impacts are unavoidable, to collaborate on the best available options for mitigation and conservation. As you can see from this list and what staff provided in their presentation, we have a lot to do, but certainly this is the right location at the right time. And I do want to leave you with just one slide on the overhead, if I may. Zoom in. Again, the point of this slide is really to underscore the fact that we are about three and a half miles from the Capitol Building, measured from one of the closer points of our project, and measuring in similar fashion existing neighborhoods throughout the immediate part of the region. So thank you and happy to answer any, any questions.
Are there any questions at this time? We do have cards from the public. We will go to public comment then. Jasmine Shabandi.
Can I just say?
No, no, you need to come to the microphone. Thank you. We have to capture it for the record.
My name is Jasmine Shabandi. I live within the area that was shown the conceptual land use plan. I do not support the plan as I understand it to be at the current time. One thing that I am very concerned about is the, the funding agreement. And I would like to speak to something that Supervisor Serna brought up, the fact that none of the money that is going to go for planning, not one red cent, as he says, sir, would be coming from the county. And while I appreciate that fiscal, like, conservative view, I, I am concerned that there may be either a conflict of interest if we have the owners' group or any other group that's interested in, in investing or, you know, creating investments there. Not only that, but I also am concerned about the appearance of conflict of interest. You know, when you have a situation where the, the people who are paying for the project, the people who are paying the salaries actually of the people who are doing the work, it just seems too close, you know? And I, I feel often that we work for the people who pay us, you know? And I feel that Sacramento County perhaps may be best served when they're using tax dollars, although I probably will never say that again in my life. I am very concerned about authorizing the planning director to sign the funding agreement between the County of Sacramento and the owners' group. I received a letter at the end of October, a certified letter in the mail, describing this planned project. And something that I noticed right away was the fact the County of Sacramento logo was on the letter. And that troubled me. I immediately contacted the County of Sacramento to ask exactly what part they, they were playing in this, in this development.
Could you wrap up? Your, your time's about up.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
My point is that while I tried to find out exactly what the relationship of the county was to this project was very, very difficult as it was. So I would like to ask you, please, not to authorize the planning director to sign the funding agreement as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, Jennifer, I could, I just wanted to follow on your point. So when you got the letter and you followed up, just finish the rest of the story about what you
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I was asked to send a copy, like, to scan the, the letter and send it to Sacramento County, which I did. I did not hear back. I sent it by email. I followed up maybe more than 20 times with phone calls and once an actual visit. And finally, during my actual visit, I was advised to contact the Bob Thomas Group. I didn't feel comfortable doing that because I felt like this might give the impression that I was somehow interested in it or that I agreed with it, and I didn't want my, my thoughts to be misconstrued. So then I went, for example, to the, to the Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, where I thought maybe, you know, I could get more information about that. And, and I noticed that the chairman of that council is the, the consultant for the Thomas Law, that we had the pleasure of hearing today.
Okay.
So, you know, I just feel like maybe this is, you know, just a very close to me, standing from the outside, as just a person who is a landowner in an area that doesn't show my piece of property at all.
Thanks for, for the explanation. If I could just, you know, we're gonna hear other public testimony, but I think, Todd, maybe to, you know, as we get to the conclusion of the public comments, some reiteration of the process, because you talk about, you know, the whole outreach effort and so forth and, you know, whatever effort's been done thus far and how, whether it's Jennifer or anybody else, can have assurances, solid assurances, that whether it's you or some other planner, assuming we initiate this, are the points of contact as it relates to the county's consideration or view of this versus anything maybe advocated by the, the landowners' group and/or their representatives, because I think that, that integrity in that process is so very, very important. And again, this, the process we're using, I'll just say, is not one that we haven't utilized for probably better part of two decades in this county, but it's one that I think it needs to have those firewalls that you're, you know, have described, at least for your concerns, and maybe others will hear. And so I think it's really important from the standpoint of the get-go. I mean, we can't do what, do anything about what happened yesterday or that communication, but certainly going forward, and I guess, Todd, I would just ask you, you know, take some time at the conclusion of the public testimony to outline that. It's, it's talked about a bit, at least in general terms, in the staff report, but I think that's very, very important for Jennifer, anybody else, and their engagement in, in what may happen in the future, so.
Supervisor Natoli, if you don't mind, I'd like to just point out a basic adoption of the name of this area as the name of the project. You know, I mean, we went from calling this area the boot to calling it the Upper West Side Project, which is already the name of the project. You know, why are we calling the area by the name of this project if there isn't already a great sympathy for it? You know, I mean, I'm just, just looking at it objectively from the outside.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. I appreciate Supervisor Natoli calling out the request of staff to, at the end of public testimony, address some of these issues, especially the ones about outreach process. In some cases, there's a legal requirement that residents be notified from a certain distance away from the plan area. So I would like Todd to be thinking about explaining the distinction. So, I would like, Todd, to be thinking about explaining the distinction between those things at the appropriate time to chime in and reference that. Just a couple procedural things. It would be very helpful for me, for those that are going to be speaking today, to give me an idea. You don't have to give me your address, give us your address, but if you can let me know generally where you live, what subdivision, that kind of lets me understand the geographic juxtaposition of where you're living, combined with what your disposition is regarding the proposal. And then, lastly, I just want to make clear, you may see or hear me typing. I'm not ignoring you. I'm not doing web searches. I'm typing notes from your testimony. So, just want to make that abundantly clear. Thank you.
Karen O'Hare. Karen will be followed by Stanley Stewart.
Does this go on? Oh, can you hear me?
It rises.
Just a little taller. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Kennedy and members of the board. I'm Karen O'Hare. I've lived in Natomas since 1979, and I'm part of an ad hoc group of residents from West Lake, West Shore, and Sundance Lake area who are concerned about the safety and noise issues at the airport. This process contemplates development of what has traditionally been designated Airport Strategic Reserve in the airport's master plan. In addition, this proposed development is also incompatible with the airport land use plan and the county's current low-density zoning in that area, agricultural zoning. The county wisely instituted these measures to allow the airport to operate efficiently while still protecting its residents and minimizing safety and noise issues. It would be a travesty to allow the good work that the county did to maintain this reserve and low-density agricultural areas for a safety and noise buffer at the end of the airport, to let that go down the drain. It would be very sad. I disagree with the proponents that this is the right project at the right time. It is not the right project, and I hope you do not initiate the process to begin master plan here. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Stanley Stewart, followed by Lelania Rothenberger.
Good afternoon, Chairman Kennedy, members of the board. I'm Stanley Stewart. I live at 3077 Garden Highway, a little bit south of San Juan Road, across the street from the Upper West Side. And I have two issues I'd like your board to take into consideration throughout this process. The first issue is that plans show a street connecting the development to the Garden Highway, about three-quarters of a mile south of San Juan Road. I believe this would be a huge mistake, considering the Garden Highway is a misnomer. It's a substandard width road upon a levee with no shoulders. And it's already been impacted severely by the Metro Airport, Air Park development east of the airport with the Amazon Fulfillment Center going into operation. We've got traffic now who comes down Powerline Road onto the Garden Highway and into town. We've got cars, trucks, semi-tractor trailers, because an intersection with Powerline Road and Interstate 5 adjacent to Metro Air Park has not been installed. So, if the Upper West Side project ultimately goes through, please, please do not approve any streets connecting the Garden Highway from the developed area. Ingress and egress on El Central Road on the east and San Juan Road on the north should be adequate. The second issue is the existing streets and roads of El Central Road and West El Camino are inadequate currently. There's, it's bottlenecked every rush hour. And so, if this project is approved, we're going to need three lanes in each direction on West El Camino from Orchard over to where it ends at El Central Road to handle all the traffic. I mean, in addition to all the traffic, we have semi-tractor trailers backing up on West El Camino trying to get into the truck stop. Because the economy's doing so well, we have a lot of tractor-trailers moving goods around. And I observe this almost on a daily basis when I travel through there. So, thank you for your consideration on these two issues throughout the project. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, sir. Lelania Rothenberger?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Kennedy and members of the board. My name's Lelania Rothenberger. I'm here to represent the Natomas Unified School District. If the, thank you. County of Sacramento goes forward with approving the initiation of this master plan process. The school district requests that we be considered for every part of how this plan will plan for schools. I did notice in their preliminary plan that they have some school sites shown. However, we need to discuss more how big the properties are, when they'll take place, how they're phased, so that they appropriately meet the needs of the Natomas Unified community and students.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, I apologize if I'm going to get this name terribly wrong. Don Fowlub? Could you state your name correctly?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Donald Fowlub. I live on the Garden Highway.
Well, good for me.
I wanted to address the issue. One of the issues fundamentally is that in this brochure that was given out, it is really a nice brochure. It's got, you know, 58 pages, and it's not until it gets to page 55 that there's any indication of attempting to meet the criteria as set forth under Policy 127 for expanding the boundary of the urban park. And even then, it seems to fall short of being able to identify six of the criteria. You can only manage to come up with a basis for four of them, which means that there are two that they can't meet. And yet, what they really want you to do is to take them off the hook with regard to these criteria by having the board proceed to set it forth. The criteria that I'm most concerned with is that which deals with the habitat. And looking at what they have attempted to reserve for the habitat or the greenbelt area is about one-third of what was designed under the general plan. And it's inadequate to protect the, you know, the raptors and the other species of birds, and also all kinds of aquatic life that exist in that area. So, I would request that the board not proceed with this, at least not proceed until such time as they can adequately demonstrate that they have met all of the six criteria set forth in LU 127.
Thank you, sir. Again, I apologize in advance. Jansen, okay, Ted, thank you.
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. My name is Jansen Tan. I'm a resident of Sundance Lake. This is my first time ever to attend such a meeting, a public meeting, but I think this is a cause that I cannot idly sit by. I belong to a coalition of Sundance, West Lake, and West Shore residents that are very concerned about this project. And our concern is about safety. Safety because currently, the land that's currently being under consideration for the initiation of this Upper West Side planning process is a strategic reserve. And current zoning provides an open area under flight paths that minimize safety risks and noise abatement for existing residents. This is an area that's directly right after the flight path of aircrafts taking off. As representatives from Natomas know, currently, there are noise issues with Sundance Lake, West Lake, and West Shore. Planes take off hundreds of times daily, especially during the summer. And these planes take off at such low altitudes, one neighbor exclaimed, "It was like Pearl Harbor." Right now, these neighbor associations, neighborhood associations, are working with the FAA and the airport, county airport management, to talk with the FAA to change the current flight paths because of NextGen, which changed flight paths in 2015 that now currently fly over these neighborhoods, to go back to these open spaces. If we build or initiate this project, that option will be gone. In terms of safety, members of the board and Mr. Chairman, the issue is, I don't have to, I guess, like, repeat this statistic. Sacramento has the number-one incidence for bird strikes. Without this open space, where would the planes land? We don't have the Hudson River. The issue here is one of safety, noise abatement, and environmental concerns.
Can you wrap up?
Yes, so, we humbly oppose, request the board to oppose and not initiate this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Gratchen?
Good afternoon, board members. I'm a North Natomas resident and have been actively watching this for more than 30 years in my roles, working for the local agency, Formation Commission, and Sacramento County's Planning and Environmental Review, and SAFCA. And through that time, I've learned a lot about the project site. Included in that knowledge is the knowledge that the airport itself needs locations where the planes can move and where they can fly. And when they have to make choices from the air traffic control tower, where I've been before, they, we don't want them to have to choose all of the southerly flights over urban areas. With this project, that's exactly what we'd be doing. And I know that in the mid-'80s, and maybe around '86 and '87, we were actually condemning property around the airport and using eminent domain and doing different things to try to clear space around the airport. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to create that kind of hardship on residents and then come through later and actually begin to take the land which we thought was safe and put people there. So, I would make the argument that that's unwise. The second argument has to do with agricultural land. This land, one of the characteristics that's most important about it is that the water comes up to the surface fairly closely often. With these rains going on, we might find the water table rising up. In periods of extreme drought, we can expect that the water can be tapped, that these farmers can turn to wells for water, but we can't guarantee that in the South County or in other agricultural areas that would remain open. So, I feel that this particular land is too precious to be usurped after so many years of careful consideration. And as I noted in my letter, in 1964, the entire North County, all of Natomas, was designated for urban uses. That's in the 1964 general plan. And of course, that was rescinded, removed, and changed because after study, the Board of Supervisors could see that it was not the appropriate location for all this development.
Can you wrap up, please?
Okay. So, I'm noticing that piecemeal, we're taking steps to undo those actions of the board. We're converting unnecessarily, I think, land. And the reason it's important, if you believe in the benefits of agricultural land, agricultural production, and so forth, you know that, or I believe, that the economics, the benefits of this project cannot outweigh its costs. And I think that's an important thing because economics are... Anyway, I sent in comments that deal with habitat conservation and so forth, but I don't want to take any more of your time, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Z. Wayne Johnson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Z. Wayne Johnson. I'm the president of River Oaks Community Association, ROKA. On it, we are, our boundaries are from basically Gateway Oaks, the I-5 ramps, back to the I-80 ramps, out to Garden Highway. And so, we're directly adjacent to the proposed project area on it. I will tell you that over the course of about the last 10 to 15 days, I've been bombarded by comments, you know, from our residents and citizens, and our board just recently convened to meet and discuss the project further as well. And as such, we, the ROKA board and community, would urge you to not move forward on a currently proposed reference plan based upon the concerns that have been eloquently expressed in the February 21st letter from the Sierra Club, the E-Coast, the Environmental Council of Sacramento, and Habitat 2020. We support the concerns raised there vis-à-vis the environmental impacts and habitat issues and the continuation of those agreements that were previously reached between responsible government agencies and regulatory authorities on it. Therefore, that were reached after much public involvement, and we trust that you will vote to uphold the integrity of those agreements and regional plans. We wish to also amplify the environmental and habitat concerns of the joint letter with the fact that the proposed development not only would negate those earlier agreements, but also would greatly exacerbate, as you've heard from other speakers, the rush hour capacity of the I-80 on and off ramps, the I-5 ramps as well, the weave, stacking, and turning lane congestion adjacent to the 49ers truck stop on it, as well as emergency evacuation planning and roadway capacity to evacuate in the advent of a natural disaster or other disaster that would happen that would require evacuation on it. ROKA is not opposed to all development adjacent and/or within the urbanized boundaries, as evidenced by our support and work with the developers for the Beazer, the Core, the Cove Project, as well as the Sunrise Luxury Apartments, the Core Project.
Can you wrap up, please?
I surely will.
Thank you.
Consistent with existing and publicly vetted plans and agreements, ROKA would urge you to, in concert with the city, pursue aggressive use of infill housing projects within the urban zone. This, we believe, would be a prudent use of resources, provide opportunities for varied housing types and densities, and validate the guidance the public and its elected officials have previously raised. The city has been moving forward in this direction, and we would urge a continued partnership to have that happen.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? How you doing?
No questions.
No?
Thank you. I believe it's M.J. Kelly?
My name is M.J. Kelly, and I'm a resident of Garden Highway. I'm here in behalf of Gibb Holwell, who is our president. And he has sent you an email, and I will leave it right here on the side. It is a lengthy email. I'm not going to read it. I do have the same concerns that you've all listened to, and my main one would be the traffic. It is very unbearable. Garden Highway is a misnomer. It is not a highway. It is a sand levee. And it is, as we see with Amazon, has become more and more dangerous, cars bulging by at 70 miles an hour. Now, with this project proposed, we're going to have more traffic. I know they talked about their loop and their electric cars, but that's not transportation. Transportation is going to be from that area downtown and through our neighborhood. I'm also concerned about agriculture and habitat in the airport and all the issues that have been stated before, so I'm not going to go into those. I will leave this here for you. He did apologize. Our president is a pilot, and he's not here today, but he has given me this to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, M.J.
Jim Pachel?
Good afternoon, Chairman Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Jim Pachel. I'm here on, speaking on behalf of friends of the Swenson Hawk. Jude Lamar will also speak. There are basically three problems with the project. First, I should point out that, remind people that the project is located in a deep flood basin, Natomas Basin, that lacks even 100-year flood protection. A-99 is a nice status to have, but you still don't have even 100-year... A-99 is a, is a nice status to have, but you still don't have even 100-year flood protection. The Core estimates that it might complete the levees by 2024. That assumes it's got the money to do it and that the cost estimates are correct. Quite honestly, I don't think you should even consider any major new development in Natomas until such times as you really do have flood protection, because the state's going to require 200-year flood protection. That's just the reality, and if you don't get that, you're not going to be able to go forward. It is outside, it's an expansion of the county urban services boundary, which was established after a good deal of discussion and study for the purpose of, you know, developing infrastructure within a reasonably compact urban area. It has been the basis for very county infrastructure plans, air quality plans, transportation plan is all rests on the urban service boundary and other purposes to protect agriculture and habitat. And finally, it would undermine the existing Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, which I believe that was mentioned to some extent in the staff report. That is a very long, drawn-out negotiation process. We didn't particularly like it, but it's, it's working so far. But it relies on the assumption that development will be confined to 17,500 acres covered by the plan, and development beyond that of any significance would undermine the plan's ability to mitigate for impacts. And I might add that one of the beneficiaries of the plan
Can you wrap up, please?
Is Metro Air Park, which is a county, is in the county, the county receives the benefit of it, you undermine the HCP, and you might be undermining Metro Air Park's ability to mitigate and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jude Lamar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. The question is, why now? There are many reasons not to go forward with this initiation. There's plenty of land available in the county. There's plenty of land near transit today that exists today to develop. I question why the standards of 127 aren't applied to initiation. That wasn't explained in the hearing. What I want to bring to the board's attention are the optics of this, optics of why now? The reason is, we have Mr. Trump in the White House. We have the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service hobbled, disabled, they're not able to do their job according to the laws passed by Congress. What you will do today by approving this initiation is to give a hunting license to your landowners and their representatives, the consultants, et cetera, the lawyers, to go back to Washington and bend the Trump administration to their cause, which is to disrupt the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, to put, you know, an end to the county's general plan policies protecting ag and open space. So there are a couple of important things, Area B and the Swenson Hawk Zone. Those are policy decisions made in the conservation strategy that are absolutely critical to protecting the wildlife in our region and particularly in Natomas Basin. You talk about an outreach plan. That is an insult to us, because we must now participate in order to protect our interests in a plan that totally subverts the plan for habitat conservation in the region. It means going to hearings like this and getting two minutes to speak, and I haven't finished what I came to say. You're burning up people's time and attention, and the optics are not going to go away. When, when these people succeed in turning the Trump administration to making the mark on this community and this county, we will have you to thank. Please don't disrespect the environment, the wildlife, the environmental community by initiating this process, which simply wastes a lot of people's time and effort and money. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Neil Clark.
Good afternoon. My name is Neil Clark, and I live on the Garden Highway. Been a resident of the county for 26 years. I've never gone to a board meeting, didn't know how to get there, and ran for my parking lot in the rain to get here because I felt I needed to speak. This project to me, I read it, I only got a notice that you're having the board meeting. I didn't get any other documentation on it. I had to get that by researching it with my wife's help. And what I see, this is, this is overreach, and this is to profit a few people. I said to myself, "I'd like to see what this is all about. I don't know why these people are doing it," but at the beginning of this meeting, I found out why. The six families or the people that were named, that are, that are behind the project, they're the farm owners that own all the farm acreage that's going, that's environmentally sensitive, that's, that needs to be there. You don't want, those people don't want planes flying over them. Everything that these people said, those farmers are not allowed to sell that land. The RD-1,000 just, just took the eminent domain, a farmer, which is right across the street from me on Garden Highway, they took his land, they paid him roughly a couple thousand dollars an acre, and in last week's Sacramento Bee, residential single-property acreage goes for $300,000 plus, and they made him sell for a couple thousand dollars. These, these other farmers that are on that land, they saw that happen, they saw it coming, and they should not be selling that land. It's the best use for that land. And I just think it's a mistake to approve this because it's just overstated. For example, on page 22, it says it's an infill project. There's nothing on the east-west infill. It's the Garden Highway. There's no sewer, there's no water, there's no gas, there's no electricity, there's no anything. What's the infill? There's lots of properties in Natomas that could be infilled, and this is not the best use of your time or our taxpayer dollars, because this is not the best place to use those resources. So I propose that we do not move forward with this until it is at least revised, so it makes more sense.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick Locke.
Howdy.
Hi.
So I'm grateful for your service. You often have a thankless job. Thank you for doing it. And that brings up, first bullet point, there is absolutely a cost to the county of Sacramento. You're it. Somewhere in the statement this morning, or this afternoon, was, "This is no initial cost to the county." That's a misstatement, just by the fact that you have people on salary. I live in West Shore. I'm new to the neighborhood. I'm new to Sacramento County, and I wasn't notified of this meeting. I'm surprised. That's my biggest alarm right now. The next thing, so I resonate with everything that's been said so far, and ironically, Santana Row was a reference point. Santana Row is the place to avoid during the holidays. You can't get in, you can't get out, and that's what you're about to build right now, is Santana Row in Sacramento. I can't endorse that. I urge you not to endorse or allow this project to move forward until you actually notify the residents who are going to be impacted by this. That hasn't been achieved. I'm evidence of that. Yeah, that's, oh, and I'm not up here because of a NIMBY issue. This is an infrastructure issue. You don't have the infrastructure right now to, to support what's going on in this county. Just going out, going out 80 on a Saturday, all day long, it's backed up. What are you going to do when you add all these new additional residents to this area? It won't work. So if you really want to throw the county for a curveball, make it a homeless encampment. Take care of the homeless. Take care of that first. Don't move forward with this, please.
Thank you. Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, Rick, before you sit down, I just, I wanted to ask you a question. So you said you didn't get notice. How did you find out about the meeting? I'm just curious since-
A neighbor of mine in West Shore, who also appears to not have gotten a notice, has a brother who lives in Whittier Ranch, and he got a notice. So he sent me a picture of it.
Okay, good. Thanks.
That is all of the cards I have for public testimony, which brings it back to the board. Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. And I just, again, want to remind folks, I've been taking copious notes about the various points that have been made. And I do want to start by expressing my appreciation to not only my constituents, but my neighbors. I think some know, my wife and I are original homebuyers in Westlake, and so we've been Natomas residents for over 16 years now, so I am very familiar, not just with the planning process, because that is my background as a trained planner, urban planner, but as a resident of that part of our county as well. I know that our offices, all five of ours, have been inundated with emails as of late, many of them, quite frankly, form emails, which I can appreciate, because not everyone has the time to compose their own transmittal to address their grievances or concerns with the board. We still consider those very valid, and I appreciate the, the time and energy that folks took to participate in reaching out to all five of us, to staff, participating in various outreach efforts that have taken place to date from the various neighborhoods that have been mentioned here today. I appreciate the fact that you took time to come out to this hearing today. I know that there was an initial request to have this hearing held in the evening. I'm going to address that a little bit later, after we hear from some of my colleagues. But let me, let me start by addressing kind of the process, because I think that's incredibly important. It's relative, it's germane, it's why I asked some of the questions I did before we even had a chance to hear from the public. This is not to minimize or dismiss the fact that people have some already developed strong feelings about this proposal, but the process today is the starting point. It's not the ending point. It's not the middle of the point, the process, and it's not a process that transpires over the course of days, weeks, or months, sometimes even years. It goes on for decades sometimes. It's why I asked some of the, quite frankly, admitted leading questions I did of staff in terms of the incredible challenge that there is to pursue a project of this scale in this particular county and what's involved, and especially in an area where you have an active habitat conservation plan. It's the reason why that the project proponent will tell you, and I suspect if he comes back to the podium to address questions by the board members, that there's been a consistent theme to our discussions to date about this proposal, and that is, there is absolutely full disclosure, at least with this 20% of the board, and that is, you proceed at your own risk. There is absolutely no guarantee. That's why I insisted that the board letter be very transparent with the public, that there is no guarantee. I've seen it happen both as a professional before my time on the board, as a project manager, happened many times, not just in Sacramento County. It's the risk you run when you pursue the attempt to change land uses and to do it at a, at a fairly grand scale. I do think that many of the concerns that were brought up, whether they be habitat, whether they be airport, airport noise and safety, whether they be flood protection, all extremely valid concerns, concerns that I, I have, that I share with you. We don't really understand the nature of what those challenges are until the commencement of further study. It's kind of a cart and horse situation. I am not, again, probably has much to do with my background as a planner, I am not subscribing to the theory that I can presume from a PowerPoint and from a board, single board letter, and from minutes of testimony, that I know every nuance facet of this proposal, this project. I have no clue what the environmental impacts are. I have no clue what, what changes might occur in the course of back and forth between our planning staff, back and forth between stakeholder groups, contributions from neighborhoods themselves, neighbors themselves. As I referenced in my earlier comments, there may be a very quick conclusion to this if it's the will of the board to move forward today, because there may be too high a hurdle in the not-too-distant future where the no-go, no-go-go decision ends the pursuit of this. So there is lots to be said about attrition when it comes to initiative like this, an effort like this. But what the project proponent is requesting, with the full disclosure, both politically and technically, that this is an extremely risky pursuit, is to simply take the next step to begin to vet what the impacts are, what the prospect is for everything from aesthetic design to habitat protection. And I, as a planner, it would run cross-grain to my training, to my fundamental understanding of good planning, quite frankly, to simply throw up my hands and say, "Don't even start. I don't want to even, I don't want you to even understand what those things are. I don't want you to understand, I don't want to be armed with information. That's not my job. My job is to be armed with information." That should not be confused with some early endorsement of a process and a project when we're at the first, second of years of analysis and continuing hearings and very transparent back and forth with the community. And so for those reasons, I think it is incumbent upon us today to, again, with all the various caveats, just to beat that dead horse a little more, that this is an incredibly challenging pursuit. If I had to wager today, if you, if you said, "You tell us what the odds are." You give us the over-under, Supervisor Serna, on this, I wouldn't be doing it. I wouldn't be putting my money on it. I will tell you this, that if you look at even some of the language in the slideshow by the proponent, there's verbiage such as, "We'll try to achieve the goal of." Now, this is the district I represent. I am most answerable to the people that have come to this podium today, have taken time another day to be here, have taken the time to write emails to me. And I will tell you today, at the very outset of this process, that's not good enough. Don't give me "we hope," okay? Don't give me "we want." You're either going to have a net-zero energy consumptive community, or you're not. You're either going to have hardwired chargers for zero-emission vehicles in all the homes, for all the households in this project, or you're not. You're either going to beat and exceed what other master-planning efforts in this county have pursued in the past in terms of percent of open space and habitat that is preserved, or you're not. I don't want to hear about goals. I don't want to hear, "We're going to try." First meeting, we come back, again, if it's the will of this board to move forward today. First meeting, I start hearing these aspirational objectives. Red flags go up for me. Let's not forget, I was the lone no-vote on this board when it came to a project called Cordova Hills, and I was a lone no-vote on that project for what I still believe were very valid and good reasons, not the least of which, there was this ethereal promise by the project proponent, the developer, that we're going to have a university. Okay? And, "Board, you should approve our project, including moving some of the urban services boundary for that project, because we've got this unique amenity." That hasn't come to fruition. People can promise things all day long. I'm not interested in promises. You're either, you're either going to do it, or you're not. And I've said it to the face of the project proponent and the representative. This thing is going to have to be so damn good. It's going to have to be such an exceptional plan. It's going to be gracing the covers of the American Planning Association Journal. It is going to be a model. It's not going to be some aspirational plan. That's the only way that this will continue to get my attention. So in all fairness to the project proponent, I'm willing to support staff's recommendation today to take the next step with all the understanding and all the preface that I just issued. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, sir, a second. Chair will second. Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just certainly hearing from my colleague, Mr. Serna, and I appreciate his input, obviously as being the representative from the area in which the proposal is being sought to initiate. And I guess I wanted to just, well, one thing, I just, not to make any- And I guess I wanted to just, well, one thing, not to make any correction of what he said, but I do believe that Cordova Hills was entirely within the urban services boundary, if I'm not mistaken, but it did require, I think, UPA to be.
That's right. I think you're right.
But I did want to, but I think it was important, because in my comments, and I won't be long, but I just, going back a generation ago, and some in this room we recall, some of the same folks that are here today were there then, when an application under a different general plan context was allowed to be made, actually went through all the environmental vetting, and came to hearing several years from the time it was submitted, it was known as Deer Creek Hills then, and it was proposed, two-thousand-unit development north of Rancho Marietta, in the district that I represented at the time. And, again, there was a lot of time spent in these chambers, and there were no guarantees in that process, and ultimately, the board at the time, the majority rejected that project, three-to-two vote. I make that note is because, in that case, the project proponents actually took to the ballot, and I think the board action that was taken at the time was further confirmed, because nearly eighty percent of the folks in the county voted to reject the growth initiative that was actually taken to the voters. Only cite that is that I think to the point that Supervisor Serna is making, and certainly some of you understand this very well, both on the development applicant side, but certainly on the side of those who advocate for open space and environment, for agriculture and such, that there aren't any guarantees. And certainly, over the years, in these chambers, a number of development projects have been debated, some have been approved and some have been denied, but I mentioned a high-profile one, because that was a good example of folks who spent a tremendous amount of money, the environmental documents were several inches thick, these chambers were full of folks that were both opposed, and in some cases, are supportive of that project, and, again, this board ultimately rejected it, and so did the voters on a subsequent vote. Most items do not go to a vote of the people. I would just say, too, that there's something in this staff report that I want to draw attention to, and then I'll conclude my comments, but it's really important, I think, as Todd outlined, and I would just ask, before we actually get to a vote, that we could at least have a little more explanation about the public outreach process that Mr. Serna spoke to, and that one of the speakers spoke to very early on. But I want to just draw attention on page twelve, and I'm just going to read a very brief portion of it, says that, "It's staff's qualitative assessment that Sacramento County's current interests are much the same as when the Antomenas Joint Vision MOU was adopted in December of 2002, some seventeen years ago, or nearly seventeen years ago. The issues and concerns regarding open space, economic development, and future growth outlined in the MOU are still relevant today. Sacramento County remains committed to sound planning, principles that result in protection of the airport, from urban encroachment and wildlife attractors, open space preservation to enhance quality of life, continuation of productive agriculture, and the creation of high-quality communities. In sense of adoption of that joint vision, additional issues have emerged, such as climate change, sustainability, and climate resiliency, as well as secure and sustainable water supply, protection from flooding, and other variabilities related to climate." I raised that and point that out, because it's really important. Those are some of the hurdles that a project that's been proposed, that they're seeking to initiate today, will have to overcome through the hearing process, address, as Mr. Serna very adamantly stated, and I think those are very, very high hurdles. I've sat on this board now, I mean, my twenty-fifth year. Land use planning is very serious, it's very permanent, it has impacts certainly on those landowners who propose it, but it also has impacts on the broader community, and whether it's traffic, housing density, affordability of housing, jobs, certainly open space in agriculture, all of those things need to be taken into consideration. And I guess I would just sum my comments by saying that I've been one who, again, throughout the years, have been willing to allow folks to submit applications. The district I represent is south of the American River, but includes a lot of, and certainly the new growth areas, but is predominantly the area where agriculture, open space, the habitat conservation plan is now in place, includes the Delta. And so I think the understanding of the issues are ones that can be applied to this area, there are some similarities as well. But I would say that if folks are of the mind that they want to, and they can meet certain criteria from the onset, to at least submit an application, I'm willing to allow them to do that. I agree certainly with one of the commenters, that yes, it will require an investment of time and energy by those who will continue to, I'm sure, not only track the project, but stated opposition today, will continue to make those concerns and comments known through the process, and it's not to be a waste of time, but I do think that certainly under the rules of our general plan and so forth, allowing folks to make an application is certainly something that is worth considering, in my view. I'm prepared to support the initiation, or the application to accept the initiation, but I think I would just close that, as Mr. Serna so eloquently stated, this is proceed at your own risk, because there are no guarantees in the land use process, and I imagine it's going to be several years before this board, assuming it were to go to that point, would actually see this for some consideration, that would be, actually have the full plate before us to consider the merits or the lack thereof of a project of this magnitude. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a very highly qualified motion and a second.
Actually, sorry, can I, I just had Flo pull the resolution for me. I just wanted to note that on the recommended action, the resolution, which is before the board does three things, it's initiate the specific plan, process, direct the planning director to assemble and convene a technical advisory committee, and authorize the planning director to sign the funding agreement. Those are all in the resolution. The other two recommendations, two and three, I don't think are in the resolution, so those are still a recommendation before the board, but they're not within that resolution.
Great, thank you.
Now.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
I apologize, my button wasn't working very easily here. Just say, I'm going to support the motion. The project has a lot of things to recommend it, that it is infill, and it's near infrastructure, and we are looking to have projects like that, that don't, that keep people from moving to Plumas County, and then driving into Sacramento to work, but it also has some real challenges in the habitat and economic justice areas. So I look forward to getting the answers to those questions and more later down the road.
Supervisor Natale.
Ms. Chair, I just wanted to see if we could have Mr. Smith, Todd, if he could respond to the public outreach portion, just so people.
Yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor Natale, for that reminder. I do have a couple of points that I want to respond to, and I'm categorizing them into essentially three parts. One is the notification process, whether that's through mail notices or other means. Two is the funding agreement concerns, and ultimately, the integrity of the process. So, starting with notification process, so state law requires us to go five hundred feet, that's the minimum. For projects of this magnitude, our intent is to expand that so that we reach whoever needs to be reached, and I appreciate Supervisor Serna, your point earlier about the environmental justice element. We're learning as part of that process. Outreach can be different, depending on the community we're trying to reach. Not everybody subscribes to an email list, not everybody pays close attention to what comes in the mail. Some people pay more attention to, say, social media or things like that. So we're learning as we go, as part of that process, that outreach needs to be different, depending on who we're trying to reach.
Can I just interject here real quick? Because we had at least one speaker, Rick, forgive me, I didn't catch your last name.
Locke.
Locke. Mr. Locke. So he mentioned that he had a friend, I believe, that was noticed in Wooder Ranch, but he's in West Shore, he did not get the notice, they did. I suspect that has to do with the five hundred feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we can obviously expand the list to however big it needs to be, to reach whoever it needs to reach. We have no objection to that.
So, at my insistence, I'm going to just tell you right now, that either you figure out what that magic number is, whether it's a thousand feet, a quarter mile, what have you, or I'm going to come up with an appropriate distance of my own and give it to you.
No problem.
Thank you.
So that's the notification process. One thing I want to mention, another thing related to that, we will be setting up a project website, where we will post available information along the way, and we'll be able to send that out and let people know where to find that information. Regarding the funding agreement, and this is closely related, at least in my mind, to the integrity of the process, the commenter raised the question about the perception, essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, that this essentially pays staff salaries. So, the planning department has worked, I think Supervisor Natale, you mentioned this, for the last couple of decades, on a fee-for-service basis. This is no different, in that it covers not just the planning department, but other staff department time, and with all due respect to the commenter and the optics of that, I do take offense as staff, and again, I mean no disrespect to the individual who raised that issue, but from staff's perspective, we're not here to do developers' work. We're here to implement the general plan, we're here to do work that best serves the citizens of the county, and our job is to provide transparent and consistent information to the decision-makers yourselves, as well as the public. Again, I mean no disrespect to the individual who made that comment, I want to just make that on the record.
In a similar vein, someone mentioned earlier, too, the salaries of the board of supervisors, and we're getting paid what we're getting paid, based on state law, in fact. We get paid as a percent of Superior Court judges' salaries, so I think it's actually in our charter, but we're getting paid what we get paid, regardless of whether we have ten projects in front of us, or no projects in front of us.
Right. And there are a few provisions in the funding agreement that identify that this is not a guarantee of a certain outcome, there's no guarantee of a schedule, there are provisions for resolving disputes or disagreements over technical studies, the county has the option to peer review, to hire independent consultants for, if there's an issue that needs to get resolved that way. That's what is consistent among all of our funding agreements, we have all those options available to us.
One last thing as to the motion. With the motion, I want to also give a clear direction to staff, that one of the first things that resonated with me, in terms of the community transmittals that we received, the first request was for an evening meeting, because of the inconvenience of being here in the middle of the day. I want us to give very thoughtful consideration to which hearings, meetings, convenings that are associated with this project that will occur in the future, perhaps some of the more watershed moments, if we even get that far, and those I want scheduled for the evening, so that the community has the convenience of being here, if they so choose, and they don't have to interrupt their workdays, or being at school, or what have you. I think that's a fair way to move forward, in terms of making this as transparent and open and welcoming a process for my neighbors and for my constituents as possible.
Understood.
Thanks.
Supervisor Candy, I just want to clarify one thing. I do appreciate Todd saying about the comment that was made, but I think the underlying issue there is that if there's any information that the residents need, we are absolutely available whenever they want to come by to our office, planning, see what work we're doing, and what we're being compensated for, so I want to make sure, with the public here today, that anytime you want to see that, we can do it. It's not the first time that we've had issues like that come up. Supervisor Natale's district, we had Mater South, where we had folks come up with similar issue, we've made the same offer, and sometimes folks have taken us up on it. Anything they need to see, we'll show it to them, but I want to recommit to this board and to the citizens that are here, that our obligation is to the process, is to bring you the best recommendation. If it's being paid, some of the stuff that gives the appearance that our staff's getting paid from the developer, has to get to work done, because we don't put general fund in it, but that does not compromise what we bring back to you, and we do not bring any bias into the process on who's giving us the money to get the reports done.
And if I could just say, that anything that bears our logo should either be vetted with our staff, and/or there should be information so that the Jennifer's of the world, or anybody else, when they make a first call to the county, they can get information that is accurate and that we know, so there's not any disconnect with regards to that, you know, what the applicants do on their own time or money, and how they do their outreach, that's one thing, it's been coordinated, but I would just say that that's very critical, because that reference was made, and anything that bears the county's logo, that has any official sanction, or if people take that liberty, then that needs to be considered, and I'm not saying that's what occurred, but.
I think Supervisor Natale, that did, there is an instance that our logo did get out, and I think through Todd, and planning, and our communication office, the applicants were told that the county logo is for county product, and if we're going to have something joint, that's something we'll bring back to the board, so that way it's totally transparent on what we're doing, and not just on behest of somebody.
Any other comments? All right, we have motion and second.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all for being here today. All right, item thirty-nine, we are an hour and fifteen minutes behind.
Item thirty-nine is recommendation of approval of a zoning code amendment to amend chapters one and seven to address continuation of uses made non-conforming by amendments. The environmental determination is exempt.
Jessica Brandt with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to present our requested amendments to the Sacramento County zoning code relating to non-conforming uses. Some background on this, the Sacramento County Development Code, which was adopted in 2015, was a major update to the zoning code that reclassified, consolidated, or otherwise modified the categorization of a large number of uses. In the years after adoption of the revised use tables that were part of this effort, planning staff found that the consolidations resulted in a number of existing uses being either no longer permitted or requiring entitlements. However, it does not appear that this result was intentional. Planning staff who worked on the update believe that this resulted from a policy decision to adopt the most conservative permitting approach for each consolidated use category. Businesses that are no longer permitted, or that require additional entitlements, are subject to zoning code section 193, which is non-conforming use of land or buildings. Section 193 requires businesses to obtain what's called a certificate of non-conforming use, or NCS, to continue operation five years after a zoning change. The NCS process is designed to confer what we call legal non-conforming status for these businesses. The intent is to ensure that allowing the use or business that's now considered incompatible with the zoning designation that it's in, that continuation would not result in nuisance impacts. The application cost for an NCS is currently $1,081.58, and the review process takes about six to eight weeks to complete. Per staff have sent notifications to affected businesses, business owners during business license renewal since 2016 about this process. Understandably, business owners have expressed concern regarding the additional permitting triggered, not necessarily by issues with their business or their use, but by this administrative change to the zoning code. In response to this concern, planning staff is bringing forward zoning code amendments that would allow uses that meet certain criteria to establish their legal non-conforming status through grant of a zoning verification letter. The uses that would qualify to request the zoning verification letter are those that are not subject to new or additional use standards as part of a zoning code amendment, and that are not listed in the zoning code table 3.7, which are uses subject to separation requirements. Staff is recommending zoning verification letters for these uses, as opposed to going through a certificate of non-conforming use, because the zoning verification letter offers a reasonable compromise between imposition of cost and time to business owners, and the county's ongoing practice of documenting the grandfathered status of businesses. Both the county and business and property Both the county and business and property owners benefit from having a written record of a uses legal non-conforming status. The zoning verification letter is simpler and faster than the NCS process. The current fee is $165.11. At its November 26 meeting, the county planning commission voted to recommend approval of the zoning code amendments. The commission voted also to recommend waiving the fee for the letter as well. The cost, if the fee were to be waived, would be covered by our per general fund allocation. Staff has included both of these items in the recommended actions of the board letter. With that, staff is recommending that the board take the actions as outlined in the board letter, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jessica, for your presentation. I think the staff report and certainly your summation, you know, gave a pretty accurate portrayal of what occurred, and I, you know, those that were here, several of us, in 2015, when we heard the zoning code update, you know, we went through several hearings and heard, you know, that if there were some cleanup items, we'd come back and so forth. And I guess this is one of those items where, different than those uses that require separation, which you've certainly called out here, and those are some of the ones that may have other aspects to them that may be of issue in a community or, you know, a business setting. But this makes good sense, but I would say that this wasn't created by the small business owners who, in large part, there's probably 100 of them or so, or I think we did the math yesterday, maybe 75 to 100.
70, yeah.
Yeah. That, this is something that I think that by virtue of the fact of the action this board took on the zoning code, development code update, which obviously was long overdue, that the $165.11 ought to be something that we bear at the county level for this, and we shouldn't charge for those letters. I just, it seems to me, again, some of these are small businesses, and I just wanted to be clear, clear that you use an example in page three of attachment two where uses that were business services that kind of folded in. Was that an example of where you had a locksmith that previously didn't require, and now the locksmith didn't change anything, the only thing he didn't change was the locks on his door, he just, he or she was there, and we changed what the prescription was, and so therefore, you know, even at the minimum would have to get a letter.
Correct.
It's when they were in the same place of business, we're doing what a locksmith does, and then have to pay $165.11 for that letter at today's rate. And so I just wanted to make sure that was the example. So in my view, and while I support this, but secondly, I think that, and I said this, Mr. Gill, yesterday, that I think that, you know, it's a modest amount of money, but one that I think that this county needs to bear the cost of that and incur the charges that it wasn't created by the... They didn't change anything, we did, and these weren't obnoxious uses and/or some that was problematic. You got rolled into the bigger picture, and this is basically cleaning up some of the items that were taken as a part of that overall package in 2015. Thanks.
Supervisor Peters.
Is that a motion, Don?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, and I support that. I think the county should wait, absorb the fee, so...
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 40 is the pavement condition report presentation.
Good afternoon, Reza Magisi, Department of Transportation. Today's item is the presentation of the county's pavement condition report. The report was prepared by Nichols Consulting Engineers, known as NCE. About a year ago, NCE was retained to upgrade the county's pavement management system, which took a significant effort to complete. The upgraded pavement management system has given us capabilities that we never had before in making decisions on cost analysis and pavement treatment options. With me today is NCE Vice President Margot Yep to give you an update on the status of our roadway network and to present the pavement condition report. After her presentation, DOT staff that are here will be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Reza. Good afternoon, and since I know that the schedule is a little bit late, I will try not to dwell on the too techie details of my presentation. Let's make sure I know how to operate this thing. Okay. So as Reza said, what I'm here today is to give you a little update on where we are with the county's road network.
There we go.
Okay. Just to give a quick overview, one of the things that we like to do is to give a grade to the, give a grade to the road network system, and I'm going to explain what kind of grade we are, we're going to be doing. And then probably the most important part is towards the end, is talking about the funding analysis and the needs that we prepare for you. So the first thing I wanted to share with you is Sacramento County has an awfully large road network. You've got about 4,700 lane miles, and as indicated in the staff report, if you were to drive every single lane of every single mile, every single road in the county, we would be in Ireland by the time we were done. It's the eighth largest county road network in California. But the, and on this table, I have a lot of numbers, but really, the only number I want to leave with you is that 5.5 billion. That's what the road network is worth. That's an asset value. It's probably one of the biggest assets owned in the county, and so it's no surprise then that with an asset that is valued at this number, it requires some funding, some level of funding to maintain it. The, you know, in everything that we do, we like to grade things, and I, and so we use something called the PCI, or the Pavement Condition Index. And it's a very simple scale, zero to 100, with 100 being excellent or good, and zero being very poor. And you can see on this table here that we've given you some breakdowns of what those descriptions are, as well as an estimate of how long, how old the road would be by the time it reaches certain categories. And I wanted to share with you some photographs because I think that actually illustrates what these PCI's look first better. So this is a road with a PCR of 74, and you can see it's actually in pretty good shape. There's one little crack going down the middle of the road, a little bit of revelling perhaps on the sides, but otherwise, nice and smooth. If all of us were driving on this, if the road outside my house looked this good, you know, we would be, probably be pretty happy. And then as time goes on, and the impacts of traffic and the climate, roads deteriorate. Here, you have a road with a PCR of 59, and if you look closely, you can see now the road looks grayer, which means it's oxidizing, it's getting harder. And if it's hard, it means it's more brittle, which means then cracks begin to form, and as cracks form, then the pavement begins to deteriorate. And you can see that there's some cracking beginning to show up here. And if we don't do anything, we let it continue down to 34 and then onto this one, 25, you can see now this extensive cracking. And it's not just any cracking, this is alligator cracking, which in my, as a pavement engineer, what I can tell you means that a structural failure. In other words, the thickness of the asphalt has been compromised from the top all the way down to the bottom, and really, what that means from a financial point of view is that the repair is quite expensive. So what the county tries to use is a tool called the pavement management system, and like all tools, it tries to answer several questions, and there's lots of academic definitions, but I like to think of it as a fairly simplistic way of asking these four questions. What do we own? How many miles of roads do we have? And what is it valued at, which I've just explained, it's about 5.5 billion? What condition is it in? And I'll show you some trust later, it's unfortunately, the road network, it's not in great condition. And then probably for the last two bullets are the most important, is what are the repairs? Where are we, where do we need to put them? And how much do we need to maintain them at different levels of service? So to give you some background and context, we started working with the public works staff, DOT staff back in 2017 to look at upgrading the software that was used, as well as looking at the road conditions. And last year, we completed reevaluating the entire road network, and then we developed some maintenance strategies to figure out what we need to fix. And we know, beginning in this whole process, we knew that we were not going to have enough money, so we looked at it in two ways. How much did we need? But also, given the existing money, what can we do to stretch those dollars? And so those maintenance strategies are intended to find ways to stretch the existing dollars that we have. And I think, you know, any discussion about roads and money needs to spend a little bit of time on the historical context. I think most of you are probably familiar with the fact that, you know, most transportation money comes from the gas tax. The California gas tax was raised first in the early 1990s, we had eight, yeah, 1990s, about 18 cents a gallon, and this has kind of fluctuated a little bit over time. But I think one of the things that is probably most telling is I have these two charts. This chart is from Caltrans, and it says that after 18 cents per gallon that we first passed in the 1990s, by the time 2014 came around, it was really only worth about half its purchasing power due to the impacts of inflation, as well as the fact that cars have become much more fuel efficient. So that part dropped the revenue piece, but the other side of the equation is the cost of construction. And if you look at this chart, this is also data collected by Caltrans, this is the cost of essentially asphalt. In the same time period that the gas tax have its purchasing power, asphalt costs increased fivefold. These two factors alone basically just squeeze what the efforts of the DOT can do in terms of maintaining the road system. So if you look at the funding in the last 10 years, it's probably been, you can see it's fluctuating, money comes from multiple sources, we've got the gas tax, we've got state and federal funding as well, but the key is that, one, it's a little volatile, it fluctuates, and that on average, we've got about $10 million a year. So the big game changer, of course, was...
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna.
I just want to, can you go back to the bar chart, please?
Yes.
You have categories for the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, right? Utility, SHRA?
Mm-hmm.
And you have a category for state and federal.
Mm-hmm.
When you have SHRA up there, I assume you mean Community Development Block Grant funding.
Correct. Some of those funds go to paving.
Tell me how this is not, tell me how the state and federal doesn't double count the CDBG.
So the federal and state are primary transportation, which is FHWA money.
Okay.
Separate department.
Okay, but the SHRA money, it should be noted, that is pass-through money from the federal government.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like you might want to stay on that slide, we have some less. Supervisor Peters.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. It's easy to see on this chart how much federal funding has been reduced, basically to nothing.
Correct.
And do you have a moment to explain what that is, if anyone's paying attention? What caused it?
The federal gas tax has not increased either, not for the last 20 years. In fact, I think California has been more successful at raising it than the feds. Most of the federal funding that comes goes to Caltrans. Really, state and local, if you look at it statewide, cities and counties, only about 10% of the funding comes from federal sources. It has traditionally not been the primary source. During the ARRA days...
That's not true. According to your graph, if you look at seven, eight, and, I mean, the first five years on here, there's quite a bit of funding.
Right, so those came from the ARRA right after the recession, when we got a significant chunk of money that came from the feds in order to jumpstart. If you remember the shovel-ready projects?
Mega grants.
Right, right. But if we look at it over a 20-year kind of a timeframe, it has usually been in the 10% range of cities and counties.
Okay, I think we need a more clear answer in the fut, you know, when this gets disseminated.
I think we can, we can provide more. The point that she's making is accurate, that through, historically, when you look at it, there's not a whole lot of state-federal money that's come in, and there's a complication is that that source has not grown either because the buying power has come down, but we can give you a little bit more detail as we get this information out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. I want to, back to the same graph, please.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Because again, I think there's some things that are missing here. Over the last three years, the county, you only show 3.3 million local dollars, that's gas tax. We put $2 million in general fund in, in the last, I believe, in three successive years, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
And that money needs to show there, and that should be another box because that was a historical move. Now, it may be well short of what's needed, but there is general fund dollars that need to be accounted for, it was the goal specifically of pavement maintenance.
Okay.
Supervisor Nattoli, I just noticed that when the graph was up there, we'll fix that graph, that we need to show the general fund contribution.
Because if I look at 1617, it was almost half of all the money that we had in the pot for that pavement maintenance that year, and I think it's a significant, again, it needs to be accounted for. Secondly, this shows for pavement maintenance.
Correct.
But there are federal dollars. We had $37 million in bridge replacement money that we have to match for. I don't know how that gets accounted for, but those are federal dollars, they haven't all come to us yet, they're there waiting for us to draw down on, and you show in years 13, 14, 14, 15, 16, 17, I don't know what the graph is for 18, 19, you don't show those federal dollars. Now, again, if this is entirely for pavement maintenance...
Correct.
Then I get it, but there are federal dollars, our gas tax dollars or whatever funds, that are still coming back to this county for other aspects of the road system, and bridges are a part of that. And so, again, I just, this is kind of a summary, but it needs to be accurate because this is the information we're taking to the folks in this, in our community, and I don't want to short-sell or oversell it, so...
No, Supervisor Nattoli, I think we absolutely got the general fund piece in here, but the main point here, this is just the pavement maintenance, it's not the totality of what's coming in. What we were trying to look for is on pavement management, what kind of resources we have. We know the road conditions are not good, so we're setting the stage to kind of give you an idea, the lack of resources that have come in, and not only that, the volatility that you see going up and down, is that that's the main point we're trying to get to you on this slide.
Right.
But we will correct the general fund and get you the right information.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, all the dollars we're talking about, oh, sorry.
I really would like a further explanation on how federal funding disappeared for two years, then came back for a year, and then disappeared for a year.
We will do that.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
You may continue.
So obviously, I think the big news in the transportation of the paving world is SB 1, which the governor signed into legislation back in 2017, and that added an additional 11.7 cents per gallon, and more importantly, it is indexed to inflation, so we see that as a biggest revenue source for paving maintenance. One of the things we also wanted to talk about, now, that was the historical context, I think now we want to move to where Sacramento is today, and if we look at the condition of the roads on this chart, what we did was we tried to compare all the neighboring cities within the county of Sacramento, as well as some of the larger counties in California, to give you a sense of where the condition of the roads are. And Sacramento County is an average PCR of 50, it's at the lower third of all these jurisdictions here that we're using to compare. So the city of Sacramento is actually in the upper third, you can see it's about 66, which it's not great either, but it's a little bit better than the county. I think here, I want to pause for a second. Many people ask me, you know, where should we be in terms of the PCI? What's a good number to be at? And what I can share with you is that that is a policy decision. And by that, what I mean is, as a pavement engineer, I can share with you the consequences of what the policy is. If you were to tell me that as a county, we want our PCI to be at 70, then I can give you the financial needs to get there. If you want to be at 50, I can share with you what that number is going to be. Where you want to be, though, is dependent on what your constituents want and what your businesses and your recreational tourism and such, and they're very different standards. If I were to go to Orange County, their policy is to be at 85, which is extraordinarily high, in fact, it's one of the highest in the state. Now, if I were to go to Lake County, they would like to be at 65, they're at 40 right now. So you can see that where that number is depends very much, again, on where we are and what context we're in, the environment we're in, and what we want to achieve. What we are going to share with you, though, is in our funding analysis, the consequences at different levels.
Okay. Supervisor Nattoli.
Yes, while you're on this chart, I guess I'm curious, and certainly know how we compare, obviously, with some of the cities in the county of Sacramento, three of the larger cities, but not all of them, but I guess I'm curious for surrounding counties, because, and I referenced this in the comments I made last week, and I can say it again here today, if I go immediately across the county line in San Joaquin County, it's a night and day difference in the pavement condition. So where does San Joaquin County fall in this? And for example, again, recognize some of the rural counties may still have gravel roads, we have a few in this county, but for the counties that touch us, Contra Costa, Solano... But for the counties that touch us, Contra Costa, Solano, Yolo, Sutter, Placer, El Dorado, Amador, San Joaquin, recognizing each county is different, they may have a different road system. I guess I'm curious, that would be a more helpful comparison, again, than what the heck they're doing in San Bernardino County, or--
Imperial.
--Orange County, or Tulare, or anywhere else. Yeah, that's what I want to know.
I have that data. I can share that with you. Sure.
Okay, so you're going to chart to us?
I think we will get you a chart. I think one reason why we wanted to show you a little bit of this is, given how big our system is, that's why some of these other larger counties got into the equation. But your points may all take, and we should have another one just for the surrounding counties, what that looks like. We'll get you that.
And just one other point on that, Nav, and to our presenter, that you said we're the eighth-largest system in the nation--
In the state.
In California.
In the state. And so, and where do we rank in PCI of those eight? Are we dead last?
No, you're not.
Oh, we're not?
Lake County might be dead last.
Oh, they're bigger? They're one of the--
No, they're one of the smaller counties.
But their PCI is--
But the PCI is the lowest.
No, I think Supervisor Tolle is asking, off the top eight that we are--
Oh, I see.
--how do we rank there?
You might be towards the bottom part of that scale.
I would--
I think we are.
I'll have to pull out my table with a look.
And I think, I think the other thing, point that we wanted--
Don't sugarcoat it, no.
No, I think we're at the bottom. The other point here is, particularly with City of Folsom and Elk Grove, as the board knows, those are more, they've had more recent development.
Correct.
So part of their development agreements, a lot of their PCI is in a much better state. We just wanted to illustrate that there is this thing, old versus new. When you get into our urbanized area, those are older ones. But we do unfortunately get compared to Folsom, Elk Grove, and the other ones. That's what we're trying to show you, that that's the difference there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize the reason that Supervisor Tolle was asking about surrounding counties is because that's where the people we represent live. They drive to, let's say, Placer County for something, or they're in San Joaquin, or-- and so that's what they compare to. And when they're in much better condition than we are, it's pretty hard to explain. So that's good information to have.
Although that cuts both ways, too. I mean, I challenge anyone to drive north on the Garden Highway until you get to the Sutter County line. You know when you hit the Sutter County line, it is much worse.
Because you hit the line.
Yeah, your teeth begin to shatter.
And same thing happens when you go Yolo towards, on the delta side.
Well, I certainly have that data, and I can certainly share that with you.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing we also wanted to share with you a little bit was by Supervisor Zorro's district, what the average PCI was. And it's pretty much, pretty consistent, it's all in the 50s. But I think the part that we wanted to see is that individually within each district, the breakdown is a little bit different. So if you look at District 1, for instance, there's a higher percentage of roads that are in good shape, that's the green part of the bar. And then District 3 has actually a lower percentage of roads in good shape. However--
Call 50% good shape.
And I think the point we wanted to make here is that we can't have a one-size-fits-all maintenance policy. So individually within each district, what DOT staff would be looking at as the right type of strategy to address the different needs in each district.
Supervisor Serna.
So if you stay on that chart, and I'm going to actually speak to this a little bit later, but I think the more accurate way to depict this is to weight it. Because my district is very different than District 3 in terms of county maintained lane mileage. I have very little compared to Supervisor Peter's district. And so, in understanding kind of the order of magnitude in terms of the extent of the challenge, it's both the condition of any given roadway, but it's also the weighted average of the condition of all the roadways in that district. So next time you show a slide like this, please weight it by the mileage in the district. That's more accurate.
Yeah, and I actually have something slightly, perhaps, a little more representative. I can share this on-- Do we do show that up? Okay. This is a chart that looks at the funding needs by district, and you can see this is weighted by the number of roads that you have. District 3 in the middle clearly has the most unfunded backlog there. And then District 1, being the smallest district, has the least. So I think that's kind of what you're getting at.
Yes, thank you.
That doesn't--
Supervisor Frost.
That doesn't make sense, because in the slide before, it indicated that District 4 had more roads in the poor condition. Is that just residential roads? Or you're just talking about projects that have been targeted to be funded that are not quite funded?
This is the totality of all the roads in that district. And District 4, we do actually have quite a high percentage of roads that need to be reconstructed, reflecting that red part of the bar there. So--
But then the chart that you showed after this one indicates that District 3 has the most unfunded--
But that's because District 3 has more roads than District 4.
Oh, in the unincorporated? Yes.
So it takes out Citrusides, Folsom--
Okay, got it.
Takes that out.
Thank you.
Y'all are keeping me busy. Supervisor Tolle.
Yeah, and just to the comparison of this chart, because I think that lane miles is important, because obviously District 3 has 1,750 lane miles. District 5 is next with 1,367. And I think another piece of this is the suburban, older suburban versus rural. And that's, and we'll get into it a little later on, some questions I have, because if I look at the rural system, if you look at things that are, you know, south of Jackson Highway, all the way to Sherman Island, you know, you're not going to find very much blue. You're certainly seeing a lot of red and yellow. And I think to the discussion here about not only the shortfalls, but also in lane miles, recognizing that the densities may be different, but certainly the conditions are such that, you know, that red, which, and yellow, which are, you know, concern to all of us, obviously, when you look at the portion of that, when, you know, to District 3 and 5, when you take combined, you've got probably, you know, 3,000, 3,100 lane miles, and half of those lane miles, all half, you take those who are basically in either failing, poor, or, you know, very poor condition. That's concerning, because that basically says you've got 1,600 lane miles just in those two districts alone. And again, I'm not excluding those three districts, but the predominant number of lane miles, I mean, that backlog is extreme. And when I see the amount of money that's going in on some of those other charts, and which we're going to get to in a moment, you know, I don't know how and where you ever even get caught up. And that concerns me, because if you're going to use lane miles and PCI, and again, I, in some cases, I'd take the 40 PCI gladly. I mean, we've got roads, I bet you they're red, you tell me, but some of those roads we looked at in recent times, and if they make 10, they're doing good. And again, they're going to require total reconstruction. It's not just about filling potholes anymore.
Right.
I think Supervisor Tolle, that's the main point today, is that kind of stating the obvious, is that we know we've got a big, big problem with this. But each district, there are issues in there. District 3 does take, because it has the most miles, is that our challenge is finding the funding for it. And I think at the end, you're going to see is that we're going to try to talk, explore ideas, what do we need to do, be it sales tax, federal money, what do we need to do to go shake some money tree, to bring some money back into the system.
Could I just follow, Nav, while you were speaking? Because one thing occurred to me, and I mentioned this to Ron on the phone the other day, and we use PCI as a measure, but I think one of the things that we need to track, or maybe a couple of things, certainly 3-1-1 calls, and each of us calls those in frequently, you know, many potholes and so forth. But the claims for reimbursement, again, I probably in the last six weeks have seen three or four from, you know, again, people sending pictures in where they've got popped tires, punctured rims, other damages, and obviously it has to go through risk management. But I don't know if there's any tracking of those at all. But I got to imagine, as this system continues to deteriorate, we must be seeing an increase in claims, and hopefully we're being responsive, and where damages are due to us, you know, there's some responsibility. If we know about potholes and can't get to them fast enough, you know, I don't know how that gets vetted. But I think those ought to be measures, too, because that begins to show impact to residents, motorists, users of our roads. And some folks might just low it off and say, you know, that's just a condition--
So we are tracking 3-1-1. We've got a fairly good, robust system going. Claims is the next one that we're starting to look at, is that what is that doing to our risk management side? But that's very good suggestion. We are not as robust in tracking it. What we will do is track and make sure that transportation's getting all that information besides the PCI component.
Maybe that's a conscious choice, too, you just pay the claims because you can't fix the roads.
Not going to give up yet.
So the next part of this presentation is looking at what the consequences over the next 10 years or so with the money that we do have. This table reflects the different sources of funding for pavement maintenance. And as you can see, again, SB 1 is huge. It makes a big difference, but, you know, we estimate it in the 23 to perhaps as high as 25 million, depending on the year. But on average, we assume 23 million. We've also got money coming in from the capital, from the CIP program, the Capital Improvement Program. And you can see that there's a low and a high. In other words, some years where there are a lot of projects in the CIP that involve paving, then the roads benefit from that, and so we assume about five and a low of two. Force account also has paving in there, that's the county's in-house crews. And then, of course, SECOC is the grant program, which is estimated between $3 to $5 million right now. So in our analysis, we use a low of 30 and a high of 35 with these existing funding sources.
Okay, Supervisor Frost.
Which one of those pots does the vehicle weight fees, don't we get vehicle weight fees for repairing roads?
Ron?
Ron Bakary, Director of Transportation. All of the SB 1 funding for the gas tax and for the licensing fees are all wrapped into SB 1, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, we were getting those before SB 1.
Yeah.
Right.
The VLF fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
The vehicle weight fees and auto registration and all those different pots of money.
I would have to defer to Ron.
Yeah, we do not have any weight fees that are going into the pavements themselves. The weight fees that we get go to pay off bonds and do not come into the fund, come into our funding for the overlay program.
But they were originally supposed to be reinvested into roads. That was the intention, right? I mean, that was the intention over time.
Dan Schumah, Department of Transportation. The weight fees, which, you're correct, they've been around for many years now, are currently and have been for a number of years, have been focused by the state on paying off the bonds from Proposition 1A, Proposition 1B, which built a lot of transportation infrastructure starting back in 2006. SB 1 does not include any provisions to restore that, to paying for, or to go into the state highway account to go towards paying for pavement repairs and both at the state level and down at the local level. So that's really kind of the status of weight fees at this point in time.
What about cap and trade? Are we getting any, is there any possibility, there's millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in cap and trade?
So far, none of the cap and trade funds have been proposed to go towards maintenance and rehabilitation.
Supervisor Peters. On this slide, I don't disagree with the totals, but I don't, if these are supposed to be funding sources for pavement maintenance, the CIP and force account are, they aren't really funding sources. Isn't this really general fund?
No, it's road fund.
Or road, yeah, road fund, sorry.
Road fund that we, Reso Mogi City Department of Transportation, road fund we use for general maintenance work, part of which--
Okay, I understand what it's for, but where do you get the money?
So this is a summation of all the funding that's going into the pavement program. So this is, you're right, you're correct in the fact that force account work is our road fund dollars, which generally comes from gas tax money. But it's a different form that we then utilize our own forces to also provide pavement.
I think Supervisor Peters, I get your point. I think we need to redo the source. It's, we need to list what that is.
Where's Measure A?
And Measure A, gas tax, we need to redo this, and we'll send that back to you.
Right.
I think what they're saying is that they take everything, it goes into CIP with all the different sources, it's just lumped into one. We need to break it out by all the different source of money that's coming in, and we could do that.
Yeah, that's all I'm, like I said, I don't disagree with the total, I just, I disagree with the terminology.
Understood.
Supervisor Tolle.
Yes, so what you're saying is, all we get from Measure A, from gas tax, from any other source in any given year is $3.5 million?
No. I guess what we were trying to depict here is, what would be the maximum amount that we could dedicate to paving projects? And I think based on that objective, we listed funding sources that would contribute towards paving projects. That would be edge-to-edge paving and would be complete resurfacing of roadways. But we spend quite a bit on pavement maintenance, which would not resemble paving projects. For example, pothole patching, or base repair, or other treatments that would be kind of minor in nature to keep the pavement together.
So I'll come back to it in a moment, but I saw a number, the average cost for fixing a pothole. What is that number? I saw that quoted recently, it's multiples of tens of dollars.
Per pothole?
Yeah.
I believe it is about $15 to $20 per pothole. That's on average.
On average, right.
Yes.
And when I think about that, and we can think about our own respective districts, what we spend just chasing potholes, if that's the average, you know, and again, you're responsive, you get out there, but that in itself is, and again, if we're going to see another chart, to see what we're chewing up--
It's about $800,000.
Is it?
We fixed four--
No, potholes? On potholes, we have spent several million dollars every year.
Yeah, I got my digit wrong here, but it's, but we had 45,000--
That's correct.
--potholes a year we fill.
Times 20, so 8 million bucks.
Right.
Right?
It's 15 to 20 dollars per pothole.
If that's what you were asking.
Yes.
Car bill for a car.
Yeah.
That is correct, Supervisor Tolle. Last year, we had 50,000 potholes.
So that says to me that, that needs to be part of this equation, too, because if we don't get this system in a better state of repair, we're going to do nothing but chase potholes. I mean, it's going to, it just sucks all the money and resources, because you can't ignore those. And that, to me, is key to part of this, because if you're putting out several million dollars a year, just doing it, you're always going to have to do some of that. But to the degree that we're doing that, combined with our inability to then go in and make the repairs or do the preventative maintenance, that is, you know, that's sucking the lifeblood right out of your organization. If it's 50,000 on average a year, and it's getting worse, but by the previous charts we've seen, I mean, that's a scale that you're going down this way, and you're not going to, you know, find your way out with the current state of things, even if you get a little bit more money, because those potholes are dragging you down.
Yeah, we are, as our county executive mentioned, we are starting to track all those things, and you are correct. You asked earlier about 3-1-1 calls, and we're up to 14,000 3-1-1 calls now. So we're tracking, and you're right, they are, the 3-1-1 calls are increasing, the And you're right, they are, the 3-1-1 calls are increasing, the amount of potholes are increasing. And getting back to what the county executive mentioned, we are looking at every possibility for new revenue sources, because that's really the solution. Because you can't ignore the potholes because of the safety issues. And they are becoming a significant funding issue for the Department of Transportation.
Okay, Ron, and just, then back to this chart for a second. So, I heard Resa say, and you say, this is all the money we could pull. So, that means that there are funds from those same sources that have to go to landscape maintenance, they go to paying the streetlight bill, or whatever else. So, in that CIP and force account, to Nav's earlier point about seeing what dollars are in there, what gas tax, what Measure A monies, what other sources, general form, whatever's in there, and then knowing that, because there are choices being made either by virtue of board direction and/or obligations we've taken on in other areas that are drawing on those sources of revenues, because you say that's all you can put towards it, but I guess that's because of the way you have to budget.
Yeah.
You're making choices from your department's standpoint. Is that what I understand, or is that incorrect?
No, and to explain this chart, we put it into categories in which the paving projects are built. I recognize your question, and we will certainly get you a new chart that shows you by funding. But just an example of, to give, this capital improvement project, for instance, that has some Measure A projects in it, that has, you know, certainly developer projects, it has all the different funding sources. So, this is kind of categories in which we're able to complete our pavement projects, but I hear what you're asking for, and that is to show what types of money come from what categories within this. And I will get that to you.
I think Supervisor Natale, also, the essence is, you're right, there are decisions that get made. We've got other competing needs for the gas tax money. This is just one component. So, there are decisions that get made. We prepare a budget package, and we bring it back to you based on the demand that we see. So, to answer your question, yeah, there are decisions that are getting made from department, from budget, all the way up to the board. And a lot of that has been how we've been doing it for years. Because if we don't fund one component, we're going to have a deficit in it. So, if you will, it's a balancing act that we've been trying to do to get the most we can out there.
Supervisor Frost.
I would be interested, I don't know if it's coming later in the presentation, to see how much goes to capital improvement versus funding pavement maintenance. And is there, I mean, do we have a choice to spend less on capital improvement, or is that, are we in a box because we still have to progress with development projects and that kind of thing? How do you weigh that?
Yeah, so, when it comes to capital improvements, there is a lot more funding that's available. And we can definitely send a memo showing those things. But a brief example is for Measure A, for instance, there's projects that are in the Measure A program, and they're for widening projects, or they're for corridor projects, or they're for bike and pedestrian projects. Also, there's many programs through SECOG and other agencies that distribute regional funding that have categories that you have to fit. And so, there's not a lot of money out there available for the fix-it-first type of overlay programs. So, when you put an overlay program up, sometimes the programs are restrictive that don't include overlay types of work. And so, we do, that is a big issue with finding, funding for our overlay program.
Supervisor Peters.
So, Ron, it's probably long, Sam, where does Measure A money fit in this slide?
So, there's certainly some of our capital improvement projects are built with Measure A money. And so, we have Measure A projects. For instance, you know, let's give an example of Hazel Avenue that has Measure A on it. That project was certainly a large-scale project, one of the biggest projects we've done. It included many things, widening as well as bike and pedestrian upgrades. But it also included the resurfacing of the roadway. And so, there is some overlay projects that help our pavement maintenance strategies that come in the form of a capital improvement project.
So, there's.
I think, to answer your question, I think, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, Measure A money will show up in CIP and force account on that chart. Those are two places that they'll show up, right?
Yeah, and could possibly play a role in the SECOG in matching one of our SECOG grants or something that would come in the form of, yes, that would.
I think this slide gives us more questions than answers.
Okay, if you give us a chance, let us redo the slide. I think we understand the question. We will answer it. We'll come back.
Supervisor Natale.
Just one other, not so much on the slide, but going back to this Measure A, because I think it goes down to what Measure A can be used for. We make those choices to what Nav said a moment ago, but I, you know, if all we show we can devote, say that both of those, both the CIP and the force account were entirely Measure A, I don't know what we'd get in total from Measure A, but it's pretty sizable. And there are some restrictions on that. But if all we can dedicate is $3.5 million a year on the low and $7 million a year on the high, I think that that requires maybe some further examination discussion by this board going forward, in light of where we are with the report that's given, given us today about the, you know, the Measure A obligations that we have. Because, you know, again, that sales tax is limited, but I know it had maybe 50% in there for, you know, for road maintenance, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, there was capital projects that we compete for, and we have to have some money. But it seemed to me that there was a pretty significant for keeping your road system in good repair.
Understood. We'll bring that back.
Maybe departments parsing it too much in technical terms. I don't know, but it just doesn't make sense.
It, got it. I think I know what needs to be done on this.
I just want to also add that I think every time we go out for Measure A, sorry, did I jump the gun?
No, I didn't.
I was trying to be quick. We tell the voters, we're going to fix the roads, you know, and there's money to go to the roads, but they never see that. And that is confusing to them. And now, we're talking about new measures, and we have more, we now don't just have regional transit, but we have the passenger rail who's coming in and wanting to be a part of the initiative, and other people wanting to jump on board for that measure, and it never goes to fix the roads. So, I just wanted to say that, because it doesn't look like a whole lot went to the roads.
You may continue.
All right. Very good discussion. I'm going to skip to this one slide first, because I wanted to show you the consequences. This slide shows two things. The line with the little dots on it is the PCI, and it says that essentially over the next 20 years, if we were to look at this $30 million a year that we are budgeting as the low end, we would drop, the PCI would drop and level off in the mid-30s or thereabouts. And the other part, which I think is a little bit more alarming, is the little bars. And the bars are the unfunded backlog. If you think of it, it's, these are projects that we need to do, but we don't have money to do it. And it's growing from about 800-some million right now to about 1.8 billion county-wide. So, that number more than doubles in the next 20 years. And I think, I would like you to think of it as an iceberg. There are too, there are many metrics we can use to measure the performance of the county's road system. And the two that we have here, the PCI and the unfunded backlog are two very common metrics. The PCI represents the tip of the iceberg, because it's a fairly insensitive measure. The bottom, under the waterline, where seven eighths of the iceberg is, that's the unfunded backlog. And I think that's really all I want your attention to, is to look at that unfunded backlog and recognize that even though the PCI looks like it's only dropping a point a year, and people may say, well, that's not, doesn't seem like a lot, well, the big picture is that your unfunded backlog is growing very, quite quickly. This other chart that we have for the 35 million, again, just shows somewhat of the same trend. The numbers are a little bit smaller, the PCI is a little bit better, but really, there's not a huge amount of difference really between the 30 and the 35 million. But when we start looking at what will it take to maintain the road system as it is, as imperfect as it is, as flawed as it is, what would it take to maintain it? What we're looking at is about $50 million. So, that's a significant increase over the 30, 35 million that we have right now. The next question that the staff asked us to look at was to say that what would it take for us to improve our PCI to 70 in the next 15 years, and then maintain it at 70 after that? In other words, you know, let's assume that we can try and reach 70 as the goal, it would be about $88 million a year. And now, that's almost, not quite, it is more than double what we have, not quite triple, but a significant increase in the dollars. So, the other part, I think we also wanted to share with you is obviously that we want more monies needed for the road system, but the, with the dollars that we do have, we can also try to stretch it as much as possible. And one way of stretching it is really to try and preserve the good roads as much as we can, because if you look at the ratio between what it costs to maintain a good road versus what it costs to reconstruct, it's a 1 to 11 ratio, and that's a significant number. So, one of the things we talked about with the public DOT staff is looking at sustainable strategies, and these are pavement preservation type of strategies. And I know we're running a little short on time, so I'm not going to go through each one. But we did run an analysis to say, what would it take if we did do preventive maintenance or overlays only? And so, on the blue part here is the $30 million a year consequences. And if we were to add preventive maintenance to it, you can see that the unfunded backlog actually drops about almost $290 million, and the PCI points is about two points. So, long story short, if we were to do some preventive maintenance, we can make better use of our money to the tune of about $290 million over the next 20 years. This is just a picture to show an example of some.
Supervisor Natale.
Oh, okay.
Just with your last statement, that you make better use of your money. If your system is crumbling or crumbled, and you go on a strategy, and I had this conversation with staff, so I know that they confer with each of us, try to get some of the backlog down. But if you go in the direction of preventative, I get it, that you, you know, but there's a dilemma here that you're going to, you already got these, you know, 50% of the roads in these districts that are very poor, poor or failed. And then, you say, okay, but we got to hold on to what's over here in the fair or good column, and not go back and reconstruct in those areas, then you're just going, we're going to continue to be right where we are, and we or somebody sitting in these seats five or 10 or 15 years from now is going to be in the same position.
I'm not saying that at all, actually. What I'm saying is that about 10% of the total could be diverted towards preventive maintenance, and the remaining 90% would still go towards overlays and reconstruction. So, not eliminate them completely, but to take a portion of that to use it to preserve your good roads.
And so, how much of that money you're saying taking?
Usually, we try to look for about 10% of the total budget.
So, that force account and the other money that was in that, the CIP, that three-and-a-half million bucks, you're saying take that 10%, don't put that into overlays?
Well, put it on seals, for instance. There's different kind, bond wearing courses and such, which are a little bit less expensive but can cover a lot more ground.
And how much life, how much life does that buy you? I mean, depending upon those treatments, some buy you five, you know, we've had this discussion before, this is not new. Three, five, seven years, maybe?
A good rubberized cape seal, for instance, on a residential road could easily get you 10 years. Those are the local roads, the low-traffic, low-volume roads, those are the ones we would advocate using them on.
And that's, and you go on what, on the fair or on the good?
Probably on the fair-to-good category. Some with the high fares, I think in the 60s, for instance, you could make a good use of those preservation policies.
Thanks.
Another way of looking at different policies, when we get to the overlays and the reconstruction type of roads, what we would also encourage the county to look at is different forms of recycling. These are strategies that would save about 20% over conventional treatments. So, again, just another way of stretching the existing dollars that we do have. So, just to kind of wrap up where we are, again, you know, we've got a pretty big road system here. It's got a high value to it. We want to try and see, we can look at preventive maintenance and sustainable strategies to try and stretch those dollars. But even given those dollars that we have in the SB1, unfortunately, it's not quite enough to be where I think we would like to be. You can see that the PCI is going to decrease to the 30s, the deferred maintenance will increase to, you know, 1.8 billion. That's really big numbers now, and more than really half of the roads are in poor condition. So, I don't have a good story to tell you, to share with you today, unfortunately. I wish I did. But I think SB1, you know, will have an impact. Unfortunately, it just won't solve every single problem in the road system. So, I think in the staff report, these are some of the next steps that are being recommended.
Supervisor Serna.
Is that the conclusion of your report?
I'm sorry, say.
Is that the conclusion of your report?
Yes.
Okay. So, one of the things that I discussed with Nav during our briefing on this subject is the prospect of kind of a new model of how we prioritize roadway maintenance in this county. I've known it since I've been on the board to kind of be district by district, and of course, as was noted earlier, our districts are extremely different in terms of lane mileage and condition of roadway, the types of roadways. And, you know, one of the things that I recognize is the fact that while I may have constituencies in my district that have immediate desires to have their roadways near their residential areas, near their, near their homes, and have it as in good condition as possible, the thing about roadway condition is that it's appreciated in a transit capacity. So, in other words, you may drive from South Oak Park to North Highlands to go to work every day and back. Well, that, you know, county resident may be very interested in the condition of Watt Avenue, because that's where the pavement is relatively in much worse condition than it is in South Oak Park. And so, looking at it from the standpoint of kind of the smoothing of averages, I would like us to think perhaps about a different model that prioritizes where we do the work, not with some kind of artificial temperament about being equitable per district. And I, and quite frankly, the district I have probably has the most to lose, so to speak, in terms of focus, because of the very limited number of lane miles I have in District 1. But in terms of the priority, so if, for instance, District 3 has more lane mileage with, more arterial lane mileage with a PCI that's, let's say, 40 or lower, maybe there's certain triggers that say, for a year or two, what would have otherwise been appropriated to address PCIs between 50 and 60 in District 1? We need to shift to District 3, because that, those roadways are even, are in worse condition. And if we don't make investments commensurate with the need now, they're just going to end with greater cost later, because we're going to have to go and replace the entire roadway. So, I think there's a way to do it, and carefully think about maybe a different, a different model. But I'll be the first to say, I think it's worth exploring, even though it may come at the cost of those of us that represent areas that don't have a lot of lane miles. Because as a county resident, right, I appreciate the fact that I travel around, we all do, and we want wherever we go to have, to be comfortable in terms of the condition of the roadways. And so, I would ask that we kind of go down that road, no pun intended, and explore a way to kind of rethink how we set our priorities for road maintenance.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to offer another aspect I think needs to be brought into account here as well. I mentioned this to Ron and Resa and Dan the other day on the phone, and it's particularly evident even this evening, certainly as we go to our respective districts, but Travelist County. And it involves the Stormwater Utility, our Water Resources Department, and the fact that in all the areas where we have, and they're not just in the rural areas, but in some of the suburban settings, where our roadside ditches serve as the drainage system. And they are designed to convey the water both in the road surfaces, but also serve as the conduits to local streams, tributaries, and swollen creeks that we're, you know, we're going to see here in the next couple of days. And one of the things that's been very noticeable to me, and I mentioned this to our folks on the phone, is that our ability, one, to keep up with the roadside ditches, just because of, you know, shortages in staffing and the demands for pavement maintenance and so forth, but that undermines any roads, literally and physically, the roads that are already fragile to begin with. And I know that we do the culverts, you know, and replace those certainly in the roadways. But I think we need to bring water, now, bring water resources into this conversation. There's been this kind of shared, it's been kind of, I think, a bit vague, maybe it's not, but between who has responsibility. And I know that there are parts of the county that aren't covered by the Stormwater Utility, but there is a stormwater fee that is levied upon certain residential customers. There's a Zone 13 that was, you know, and has been designated for studies and contributions to everything from the water forum to, you know, delta planning and so forth. But I think that in light of where we are, again, and maybe some of those are too delicate to touch, because they require Prop 218 or whatever, but I think we need to take a look at it, and we need to bring water resources into the conversation. They do the streams and channels, and that's very important, too, because that's the conveyance of the water. But I will just say that if anybody had any questions about, again, kind of where we are, again, and I don't want to invite you to District 5, but you can go out there right now, and, you know, we have flooding areas that haven't historically flooded, but the water sits there longer. It really affects the, I think, the. It really affects the, I think, the viability of the, of the whatever bases there, and certainly the pavement surfaces. And the ditches are clogged, there's, and the other thing I want to say too, and we've had this discussion, is SWA, and other, just the debris and litter. And I know we've run into this recently even with our bridges, because of the maintenance in the upper, in the larger watersheds, and we're gonna spend $30,000 or $50,000 clearing debris from the Sutter Slough Bridge and Steamboat. And so I would just suggest that we need to have a broad discussion, NAV, and again, it doesn't make any money magically appear, but if we're gonna look at this system and its deterioration, and how we might get better with both dollars that are available, but also maybe funding sources that might allow us to tap in to, you know, maximize the utilization of the resources we have available to us, and certainly the call, you know, on, you know, general fund dollars are precious, and we've made a commitment in recent years that was pretty much unknown a couple decades ago, of putting some general fund dollars in. But I would like us to take a look at that too, because I think that's critical to the long term, and particularly to the investments you make. If we make investments in some of those roadways, if we don't do the drainages along with them, and we've done that in some of those neighborhoods, it's certainly in District Three, District Four, District Five, maybe District Two as well, where even the underground system needed to be upgraded because water was pooling in the streets, it was affecting the, you know, the sidewalk integrity and so forth. And so I guess I would just suggest that as we look for a course that may help us get to a healthier system, that we include that. And I, last thing I just ask, is that, we're gonna come back on this pretty soon, I mean, we asked a lot of questions here today, but I would hope that we'd have a follow-on workshop, not to belabor any points we've made here, but to get a better sense as we go into budget deliberations, and certainly looking at how we might, you know, build upon some of the conversation. And I, and then suggestions like Supervisor Serna's made, where we might, you know, look at, you know, trying to, you know, accommodate this with the spirit of, you know, countywide, not just district.
Supervisor Frost.
So I just wanted to say the, the conversation, I agree about the conversation around equitable and trying to go after projects that make sense, or maybe finish projects that we started. But for those of us, each of us have constituents, I'm sure, I know I do, who come to me and say, I wonder how much we pay in and our roads don't get fixed. And they, they, I mean, they're coming at us, and they're getting more and more irritated that their roads are not fixed. So where I do agree that we need to work together and be a team to try to figure out how we can get funding to, whatever funding we can get, we need to be sensitive to each of the districts getting a little love. And I know you've already done that expertly for me, for all of us. So I also wanted to mention, even though, you know, everyone's thinking about this, STA and Secog and our county, around new road funding and new ideas about new technology and how are we gonna pay for the roads? But doesn't Rancho Marietta pay for their own roads? Those are private roads within their subdivision, is that, isn't that correct? And so I think we should also be thinking about the future. If we're having this, if we're in this place right now, how are we going to move forward with future growth? And are we including a, some kind of a calculation or a factor that ensures that there's going to be ongoing funding in that subdivision for the roads that can be either a Melrose or, and when they buy the house, they buy into that concept? So we're kind of limiting, yeah, we're trying to figure out how we're, it's just a thought to, what are we doing to plan forward on new projects? Because I think when people are buying into something new and they understand that's what it's gonna be, it's easier to, to sell it, or, you know, it's more palatable for people than when they thought they were gonna get something. And then on, finally, I just wanted to say that I know we have this commission for the recycling, and we have come together with a coalition of counties for water, over water. But I wonder if there's a coalition, if there's some way that we can work with CSAC or work with other counties in California who are struggling with the same thing? Because the reality is that the state has their, I mean, their general fund has increased by 40 billion over the last seven years, and none of that money went to transportation. And they're redirecting, you know, wait fees to pay debt, and it's hard to keep track of where all the money goes. But I think somehow it's getting harder and harder for us to go back to the, convince the taxpayers that if we do another tax initiative, it's actually gonna go to fix, they're gonna see something in their neighborhood that, you know, says, yeah, I'm paying a little more, but it's worth it, I have a nice road in front of my house. So I think we should broaden, you know, beyond these tax initiatives and begin to form a coalition that goes back to our legislature and says, this is an emergent, an economic emergency, we need help. And so, those are my comments. Thank you.
Director Peters, Supervisor Peters.
What's your name?
I wanted to ask Representative, you, I'm assuming, have done work like this for other jurisdictions?
Yes, we have.
And have you seen any particularly innovative ways they have gone about making the dollar stretch further?
A couple of ones which I can share. One is, of course, this county's pretty big, and there's a very rural parts of the county that have very different characteristics from the urban areas. And so one would be to identify those rural parts and to look at strategies that might be more appropriate. For instance, you have a lot of long roads that really serve perhaps 10, you know, maybe two, three miles long, that only serve 10 or 20 homes. And reconstructing that two to three miles would be multimillion dollar project, but could we get by with perhaps some sort of a crusher course that would be half the cost of that? And I think the perception here is that some residents, my people, we're not getting the same kind of service that the urbanized areas are, but the reality is that there's less volume of roads, cars on those roads, so you have a different level of treatment.
So maybe look at how much traffic passes on the roads and...
Correct.
And use a different quality road.
Right, it's a different treatment. I'll give you an example. Marin County, West Marin is very rural, has lots of ranches, and so they use cape seals and chip seals there, which they do not use on the east side of the county where San Rafael is because it's a very urbanized areas, and that's where overlays are there. But that's one way of stretching it. Another one, which I will toss out, it's not very popular, but is taking traction, actually not just in California but across the country, is to let very low volume roads go back to gravel.
Yeah.
So Noma County proposed that, but I'm going to be going to Lincoln, Nebraska next week, and there are portions of Lincoln...
That's where we're gonna wrap up.
...that are going back to gravel.
You are the first one to stand that podium, but I'm gonna tell you right now, you're not gonna return to gravel on my watch, so I can tell you right now, so you can forget that notion.
As I said, it's not a very popular option.
No, it's not. No, and you wanna go with me and tell my constituents we're gonna return to gravel? I don't think so.
Supervisor Tolle, she was just giving ideas. That's all she was doing.
Appreciate the creativity.
Could you edit the film?
We didn't have our problem fixed.
Supervisor Peters, you still have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate this information. I am horrified to know, although I suspected it, that District Three has the biggest financial demands, and I appreciate what Supervisor Serna said. I don't know, someone would have to lay that out and see how much progress could be made. But the quality, the poor quality of the roads is the number one issue in my district. Everywhere I go, it's expletive deleted roads. And, you know, I agree with them. It's very frustrating, it's beyond frustrating to say, yes, I agree with you, yes, they are in that particular condition, and we don't know what to do about it. And I guess, was it discussed at some other time about, I don't, can't believe I'm gonna say this, doing some kind of bond to get a good start on the SB1 money, get started earlier? I don't know, but, you know, SB1 passed over a year and a half ago, and we're just, you know, not seeing any progress. In order for people to believe we're actually attacking this, it'd be good to get a better start on it.
And if I can also add, there is another strategy that many agencies are using. I know the city of Oakland, also in the 50s, PCF in the 50s has about 800 miles of roads there, bonding against a parcel tax measure, and they're putting about $350 million over eight years on roads.
I think we've decided in this county not to do so much bonding against sales tax measures, because you lose so much in the interest. I was thinking of a separate measure. I don't know, but we have to do something, and whether it's a major influx from the general fund or some kind of bond, I don't, I don't know what it might be, but I don't know how our economic development people can go out and sell Sacramento County as a great place to live when they can't even drive people, potential employees, to where they might wanna live. It's just...
It's affecting driver behavior.
Oh.
People are coming out of lanes, they're swerving, they're braking, and they're accelerating. It's crazy.
Yeah, it's demolition derby out there. So as I just wanted to say, I'm sure you know that, but it, I cannot, I, can we call an emergency?
Build the roads.
Wrong branch of government.
Build the roads. Anyway, thank you for the report. I'd like to get a couple of these charts back fixed correctly, and think of it every night when you go to sleep at night, how you're gonna fix the roads.
Trying to sleep.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Madam Clerk, anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, then.
Wait, I have an adjournment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Peters.
I have an adjournment.
Oh, what about comments from the board, comments from...
I didn't have any, but...
I did have a comment from the board before adjournments.
Okay.
So after consulting with county council, we had a respectful difference of opinion about whether or not the CEO can bring this up, or whether it's better that I address this, so I'm gonna go ahead and tee it up. And it may end with a little more work on, for county CEO and staff, but because it's not an item on the agenda, I'll keep my comments limited. But we've had the water come up in the parkway, we had, as we expected, a number of concerns expressed recently about the homeless population in the parkway congregating against the southerly slope of the levee there, resulting in a great deal of trash collection and numerous camps that are growing in size, it seems, every day. And so what I was hoping the CEO could do today would be give a report back on kind of what we're doing, but again, based on county council's advice, I'm not gonna necessarily put staff in that awkward position. So I'm going to alternatively ask that we agendize you, Mr. CEO, coming back very soon with a 15-minute block of time, perhaps with Mr. Wagstaff and Ms. Bellis, to explain exactly what we're doing to respond to those constituent concerns, specifically along the Garden Highway between I-5 and North Gate.
Okay, I'll do that.
Great, thank you. And then one last, this is much better news. I think we all receive a courtesy subscription from NACO's County News, their nationally distributed publication. Really pleased to see that Sacramento County has been acknowledged on the front page. It's one of a handful of feature stories on, and this one, in this case, it's about our effort to reduce black child deaths in the county. And it's a very, I think apropos, very appropriate story. And in fact, I will be going back to Washington DC this Friday, and over the weekend, I will be addressing NACO's Health Committee, and eventually the board as a whole early next work week to pass a resolution that I and my staff and the staff of First Five, as well as Ms. Drain, have been working on for several weeks now to encourage NACO to put on their legislative platform essentially an intent for counties to work with their legislative contingent in Washington DC on the sub, general subject of health disparities, death disparities in the African-American childhood population.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Peters.
Thank you. I wanted to adjourn today in memory of Jack Pheffley. Jack died last month in Carmichael and was a very special man. I just wanted to talk about him for a moment. He descended from the first wave of pioneers who came to Carmichael when the town was established in 1910 by founder Daniel Webster Carmichael. And he grew up in Carmichael when it consisted of small rural farms. And people from Sacramento used to go to Carmichael for the summer, you know, to get out of the heat of the city, right? And he grew up on these small rural farms, and during World War II, he enlisted in the US Navy, which led to a 25-year career in uniform, retiring at the rank of commander. And he was a pilot who saw action in the Philippines and Japan. He also served in Korea and encountered Russian MiGs during the Cold War. In peace, he was a test pilot mastering jets and surviving crash landings. During one of his exploits, he worked the pedals of his aircraft to keep it aloft and keep it from crashing into the sea. When he was asked how he managed, he said, "I'm a Carmichael farm boy, and I know how to drive a tractor." And he just always had such a great attitude. And he retired in 1983, returned home to Carmichael, and was active with the Carmichael Chamber, the Park District, and his church, Carmichael Presbyterian. He passed away at the age of 95, and is survived by his wife of 71 years, Jerry, and their three children, and three great grandchildren. He was a Carmichael native through and through, loved his community, and his daughter said that his only complaint was that he would have preferred to die in Carmichael. So I just wanted to talk about him for a moment and adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you. We will adjourn in his memory.